Good evening. I will call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Paul Russen from Redemption Hill Calvary Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Diane Klostermeyer from Pace. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. In the Book of Proverbs, Chapter 10, it says, "When wisdom enters your heart and knowledge is pleasant to your soul, then discretion will preserve you; understanding will keep you." Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight, and we invoke your presence at tonight's meeting. With all the issues going on in the town, Lord, I pray that you give this council wisdom, understanding, knowledge, and discretion. We thank you for their service to this community, and we thank you for all the people that are here tonight to represent their issues as a democracy is supposed to be. We thank you so much for allowing us to be here, Father. What a great place this is to live and to work and to serve. And, Father, once again, I pray that you just be with these people as they make the decisions that affect the lives of the citizens of Lake Havasu City, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, Diane, if you'd like to share with us all the great work that Pace is doing.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I want to thank you for the honor of being able to lead the Pledge of Allegiance for the flag of our country and the outstanding history and freedom it represents as one nation under God, especially at a meeting of our city leaders who dedicate themselves for the benefit of our community. Thank you. You asked that I give a commentary about Patriotic Americans for Constitutional Education, Pace. Many people commented that we should educate our youth about the true history of our country, its values and principles, and its constitution, based on the founding fathers' point of view. Eleven years ago, I and Mr. Bill McMahon incorporated Pace, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization, to provide free after-school classes to teach the love of God and our country at our local schools, utilizing the 5,000-Year Leap Book and the 28 Principles of Liberty, which reflect the views of the founding fathers. We hired certified teachers at the public, private, and charter schools, grades first and second, third and fourth, fifth and sixth, to teach the program one day a week for eleven weeks. We pay the teachers a stipend. We provide a curriculum guide for each teacher at each grade level. The teachers create patriotism clubs, and the students elect their officers. The students are encouraged to emulate the good characteristics of our founding fathers and to do a community project. They are also to participate in community activities, such as the Veterans Day Parade, et cetera. Students have fun learning the preamble to the Constitution, the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem, and many other patriotic songs, and about our founding fathers, who risked their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor to form this great nation of ours. The final week, we have an award assembly ceremony. We will have one again this April. During that ceremony, each class presents some of what they've learned onstage at the high school Performing Arts Center. By the way, the public is invited. And they receive certificates of achievement, and the top three in each class receive trophies. We have been honored over the years to have outstanding and dedicated patriotic teachers for our program, who develop a curriculum, offer free of charge to our youth. Parents provide permission for their child to attend, and they are welcome to see what their child is learning. And as example of such classes, already in progress this year, the students have already learned about our flag, our three branches of government, the duties of each member, the various branches of our military, our U.S. symbols, and our Capitol, including in Washington, to see all the monuments and things we have there, and they also learn about our local government and their responsibilities. They are already getting items to send for our veterans as part of their community endeavor. They also have guest speakers. As a matter of fact, two of our Pace classes of students will, with the generous assistance of you, our city council members, they will be given the privilege to see this chamber and to ask you questions. Thank you again for your support of our endeavors. We make periodic visits to each school to ensure the teachers have the supplies they need and to observe the curriculum being taught and to provide token treats for each of the classes. Due to the virus and educational concerns, we have only six classes this year. This is less than half the number of classes we usually have. Two other schools wanted the program, but they were unable to get teachers from their respective schools. We hope next year we can do better. Flyers were given to every school about encouraging the students to join in the Veterans Day Parade, to honor our veterans and thank them for their service. We encourage them to prepare notes for our vets. Some of them also got sponsorships, so we can mail these packages to our veterans. Each student was given an American Patriot Kit for their participation. We received numerous letters from the students of Our Lady of the Lake Catholic School. Drake Lambert from Oro Grande School brought in the most money and was awarded a musical American flag. It plays the National Anthem, and it also plays "My Country, 'Tis of Thee," and he got a Papa John's Pizza certificate for his outstanding effort. The notes and the money was given to the American Legion Auxiliary to send these gift packs to our veterans. Three students in that class, Tyler Blake, Drake Lambert, and Rosie Miranda, were patriotic essay winners. So they do a lot of things where they learn patriotism. We want to thank them and to congratulate them and their classes for their commendable efforts. Our goal in Pace is to provide patriotic education to as many students and adults as we can, so they can learn the 28 Principles of Liberty handed down by our founding fathers, and they can learn the Declaration of Independence, the creation, content, and purpose of our United States Constitution, and to foster patriotism for our country, its values and heritage, and to preserve America's true history. We have been able to host adult Constitution classes as well, based on the originalist viewpoint. We are staffed by volunteers, and currently Fred Mohan is president, Pat Williamson, vice president, Diane Klostermeyer, second vice president, Ginger Daughery, secretary, and Holly Antravarius as treasurer, and board members Phil Nielsen, John Levin, and John Martinez. Words cannot thank them enough for their generous support and outstanding efforts to keep our program going. We cordially invite any other people to join us. We believe our city is the most patriotic in Arizona, and our local merchants have generously donated items that we use for raffles. And many patriotic residents donate funds, too, so we can run our program, provide certificates, trophies, and awards for the students. We do not use any school money. We currently have more than enough to continue our efforts and expand our program. Thank you again for your kind attention and enabling us to inform the public of our patriotic program. May God bless you in all your endeavors, and may God bless America. I remain respectful of yours, Diane Klostermeyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
God bless you.
Yes. Thank you for your passion and leadership on that front, and thank you for being with us this evening. We'll now move on to item four, which is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers David Lane.
Here.
Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan.
Here.
Mayor Kalshih.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is our call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Again, it's important that it's within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. That would mean something that we could do, change, or be a part of. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means one minute's remaining, and red means that your three minutes has expired. You are also at the call to public is to address the city council, so just face forward and address the council, and we'll listen very intently. But the items that you may speak about are not on the agenda, so we can't have a two-way conversation during call to the public. But if you are here for an item on our public hearings, we encourage you to wait till that time, so we can ask questions and have a two-way conversation. I do want to let you know we do need to keep decorum. This is a public meeting of Lake Havasu City, so please be respectful, and if we cannot do that, then we'll have to go ahead and close that call to the public. You do not have to sign up to speak at call to the public, but we did have a few folks do that, so we'll start with the folks that signed up, and then we'll open it up to others. So we'll start with Ms. Karen Vanderjack.
My name's Karen Vanderjack, and as you know, I'm a teacher, so I'm in a teacher's role again tonight. Tonight, I'd like to address the word jurisdiction. Your jurisdiction. Your jurisdiction. What is the definition of jurisdiction? Jurisdiction generally describes any authority over a certain area or a certain person. Smaller geographic areas, such as a city, are separate jurisdictions, to the extent they have powers that are independent of the federal and state government. That's interesting, how the jurisdiction clause allows you to make decisions and research and not just follow government mandates. It is within the Constitution. You have jurisdiction. Example, 50,000-population city, a suburb of Denver, Parker, Colorado, they announced opting out of the governor's mask mandate. They had jurisdiction, and they were within the Constitution to do it. Okay, so for the last few meetings, there was a quick, obviously planned strategy to quickly revoke our right to speak with a quick draw, point of order by Councilman Lane, claiming it's out of our jurisdiction. But last week, the Pyrotechnic Show announced that within your jurisdiction, they were requiring these vaccines and PCR tests. They changed it. Okay, they changed it to just the convention participants, after a barrage of phone calls of complaints. But still, inside your jurisdiction, children as young as five, whose parents were participants in the convention, were required to have this vaccination. So if a child died, and many children around the country have died, they were within your jurisdiction. You have participated in breaking a law in your jurisdiction. The law states when an adulterated product is brought into the stream of commerce that harms people, everyone is held accountable. That is in your jurisdiction. Jurisdiction goes two ways. Number one, you can choose to do the research, find truth, and step away from the unfounded information and mandates of the state and the federal government. Or, number two, jurisdiction can be used as a hammer to its citizens in our city to refuse to hear anything you feel is not affecting us. Just food for thought. Quickly, I just want to get back to my lesson last week on the handbook violations. Page 22, "Avoid Making Recommendations or Expressing Views That Have Not Been Approved by the Majority of the Members of the Board You Represent Without Clearly indicating your speaking as a Private Citizen." Well, Vice Mayor Dolan, I have to point out that the last meeting, when we were displaying pictures of children who had died of this inoculation, of which there were thousands due to this vaccination, you said, I quote, "Disgusting." Well, that was heard even by people who are listening on Channel 4. This, again, is a violation of your handbook rules. I'm assuming not all the council here felt seeing these children who had died as a result of this vaccination, thought it was disgusting. Please stay to your decorum, especially in your role as vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane, did you want to respond?
I would love to respond to that. First of all, it wasn't Vice Mayor Dolan that said disgusting. It was me. I'm the one that said that it was disgusting, because it was disgusting. And you know what? I have the First Amendment right to say what I think as well. And coming in here showing pictures of children that you claim like that, when there were children in the audience, to me, was disgusting. Plain and simple. It was me, not Vice Mayor Dolan, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Lane. The next speaker on call to the public is Nick Verdone.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Nick Verdone. So my concern is during your coffee with the public, Mayor Cal, you mentioned that there's going to be a hotel built in the corner of I-95 and Mulberry on the Parkside. My concern is with that area, that area is directly across the street from Body Beach, which is a huge motorsports destination and the only continuously set-up jet ski race course in the entire country. Is the hotel aware that they're basically building next door to a race course? I mean, as everybody knows, anything that gets built next to a racetrack, it's the racetrack shut down. So Body Beach is a hugely important thing to the sport of jet ski racers. I myself am a racer. You know, it's a huge financial moneymaker for the city, as it costs almost nothing to maintain, and it brings in people from all over the world. Is there any protections in place in the event that the hotel or anybody else complains about the noise? And that's my concern, more or less, so.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Again, this is a call to the public. We can't have a two-way conversation, but feel free to call my office this week, and we can have a discussion about that, and I can talk that through with you. Those are the two citizens that have signed up to speak at call to the public. Would anyone else like to address the council at call to the public? If so, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, Ginger Daughery, Havasu resident. Just wanted to let you know, we are doing at Blondies, the Meet the Candidates, and I wanted to make sure that Koch, Dolan, and Lynn, that you all received the emails, and I know, Cal, you responded, and we've got everyone else going, so I just wanted to make sure that if you didn't receive the email, Blondies on the 19th, Meet the Candidates. Secondly, I wanted to give kudos to the cops or the police. COVID-19 testing, and there was a, I call them grifters, but they had a table outside of the balloon fest, but they didn't pay. They were on London Bridge Road. And so they were there, and I think they were trying to scare people and bring the numbers up, the COVID-19, so some of us showed up and had some dialogue. They called the police. Police showed up Saturday night, talked to both sides, and kept the peace. Then Sunday, they were trying to get their numbers up. They're out-of-towners. They don't live here. They're Vegas. And so then the police came Saturday, no problems, talked to both sides, because the out-of-towners wanted to get their numbers, and they get paid for each COVID-19 testing. So anyway, the police came, no problems, and kept the peace. So I'm just saying kudos to that. So just, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during call to the public?
Hi, name's James Gannon. I just wanted to make the council aware, I don't know how this works exactly, the TPT tax that's used in the hotels and Airbnbs to fund everything, it funds Go Lake Havasu. Go Lake Havasu is the go-to website when you want to visit our town. You type it in, and it pops up, and it tells you the list of events. One of the events that was brought to my attention after the fact, and a couple people were telling me about, was the Pride event. I don't know if you guys heard about that. It's the gay thing that they're doing over at the, gosh, where was it exactly? London Bridge Resort Convention Center. So I looked it up, and just to kind of see what's going on. So Go Lake Havasu Paid in Taxes is promoting this, and this is promoting things that are not good for society. I know that there are 501(c)(6) organizations that can do politics. This is sexualization. I don't think it belongs on our city's website. I have kids, and it was just brought to my attention, and then you go through, and you look at Girl Scouts of Southern Arizona. Look that up. Doesn't include Mojave County. Why are we promoting this? Some of the names of the performers, I'm not going to speak and mix public, it's pretty gross. Regardless of religion, don't sexualize children or our town. Let's try to keep it out, and I just want to encourage you guys to look in regards to the tax code. If we're paying taxes to a website that's promoting our town, let's get it clean. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Man, he's tall. Pardon me. I love being able to walk. Just want to say that. Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy. I came mayor, council. I have two things I think I want to say, as it's called to the public. First thing is, really important to me, always, 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 and I love the idea that all these children are here, so I get to address this again while the children are here. I would like to recommend during your general fund, whatever, accounting, to once again lower, please, lower the cost of the aquatic center for a reasonable amount for parents of multiple children to be able to afford to send their children to the aquatic center during the summer on multiple days, during the whole summer vacation versus one or two days, because that's all they can afford. Second, I know that recently during the call to the public, people have been interrupted in the middle of their speaking for various reasons, and one person said that they represent 53,000 people in the city, and I'm one of those 53,000 people that they represent, and I also noticed that there are a lot of people of the 53,000 people in the city who do not come to the call, to the public. As a result, anyone who comes up and speaks to the council is probably overcoming a lot of fears and anxiety and representing more than just themselves. I would venture to say they're representing close to 53,000 people. And would like to suggest that listening to anyone, sometimes, as a parent of three children, I have found out, sometimes they don't say things I like, but I listen anyway. Have a good night.
Thank you. Yes, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm a resident, David Leslie. I just want to add to what the gentleman said over here about at the Civic Center. The drag queens, they also advertised that they were giving HIV testing there, too. Just want to put that out there, so everyone here. HIV testing was offered at that drag queen event. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council. My name is Frankie Lyons. I've been out and talking to different people, and there's things that they'd like to have addressed. I was noticing on one of the websites that the Springburg Park is looking at a new renovation. Didn't we do that a few years ago? And it never materialized? Whatever happened to that money? You know, people are wondering that you're spending money that nothing ever materializes out of it. And I know that there was a grant available for water infrastructure that has not been applied for. It's for $4 million. I don't understand why we haven't applied for it. I know it's there, and some of you out there know it's there. So that's all right now. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
Don Wisdom. I wasn't going to say this, I'm so embarrassed, but I got fraud, and I just wanted to remind people to be very cautious. I was whipped around like a little puppy dog, and I thought I was pretty sharp, but they put me down like you wouldn't believe. Anyhow, just be cautious. If they say, "Don't call the bank," go home and call the bank.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council during call to the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item six is our consent agenda. Would any council member like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. We'll start with item 7.1, which is announce vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, there are several vacancies on the Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, and three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our city manager's report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to start tonight's report with kudos to our Admin Services Department, who is pleased to announce that they received the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, due to the city's all-inclusive annual financial report for fiscal year June 30th, 2020. Kudos to Jill and her team. This certificate of achievement is an acknowledgement in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and represents the highest accomplishment by a government and its management. And the city has earned this achievement for 35 years, thanks to Ms. Olson and her team in Admin Services. Mayor Shi, you visit our Lady of the Lake Catholic School to present a proclamation proclaiming the week of January 30th through February 5th as Catholic Schools Week. And you attended the Elks Drug Awareness Essay Award Dinner just last night as a guest speaker for the winners ranging in grade six through eighth grade. And this morning, Mayor, you visited the Lake Havasu High School to proclaim the month of February as Career and Technical Education Month. Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain academic, technical, and employable skills necessary for true career readiness. You've been busy. Councilmember Moses, you and our city staff partnered with the Lake Havasu High School, as well as many members in the community, and helped as facilitators for the Rachel's Challenge for the entire sophomore class just last week. As you recall, Rachel was the first victim in the Combine High School shooting back in 1999. Prior to her murder, she wrote an essay on Code of Ethics, promoting kindness, compassion, and empathy. Other journal entries described good deeds that she had done for her fellow students. In her own words, she described how one act of kindness begins a chain reaction of other acts of kindness. From the tragedy, her family started a nonprofit to keep the legacy going and helping to prevent teen suicide and school violence. The Lake Havasu Unified School District introduced this program to the community with great success back in 2018. Everybody that attended described this experience as positive and very moving, and they're very thankful for the opportunity to participate. Asking the public, can you download the Havasu Now app? In an effort to assist citizens with city service requests, Lake Havasu City initiated the Havasu Now app back in 2015. The app allows you to report issues that you see around Lake Havasu City, allows you to tag them with a geographic location, and assists the city team with being responsive to our residents. You can access this app by downloading it for free on any Apple or Android App Store, and you can also go to the city's website and click the link for Havasu Now on our website at LHCaz.gov. Mayor and council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item eight, which is our public hearings. I'm going to make an adjustment on the public hearings. We do have a lot of youth that are here for a zoning issue, which is so unusual for us, so we are going to move that item up. But first, we're going to hear item 8.1, 2, and 3 with Ms. Williams, and then after 8.3, we'll move item 8.10 up and then follow the agenda accordingly. So if any staff needs to move around on their agendas, now is the warning. So we'll start with item 8.1, which is Class B Bingo License Transfer of Location for Friends of the Food Bank. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and council, April Sue Denigus has applied for a transfer of location, Class B Bingo license for Friends of the Food Bank, from 510 East Main Street, Quartzsite, Arizona, to 5601 Highway 95, which is the shops of the Lake Havasu. This application was reviewed internally, and no objections were received. I believe that applicant may also be in attendance tonight to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Is the applicant here? I do have one question, if the applicant is available. Oh, could you just make your way to the podium for me? Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, let's get in the microphone, just so the folks at home can hear us as well. So I'm sorry, what was your name?
I'm Courtney McKinney.
Courtney? Thank you. I just, I received a comment from a citizen about the Friends of the Food Bank, and that it's actually the food bank down in Quartzsite that I guess the funds or the proceeds would go to. One, is that true? And two, if so, how are we going to... Um, one, is that true? And two, if so, how, how are we gonna market it so that we understand? That that's the food bank in Quartzsite versus the food bank here locally? Yeah, cause you're talking to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Um, I know that we use the nonprofits, um businesses licenses for us at our facility. Um, and then we do give them part of the proceeds. I'm not too sure about the financials personally, cause I'm like, like the assistant there.
Okay.
But um I can have April Sue um reach out to you and give you that answer for you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. It's just more that uh obviously we have needs here locally that we'd want to make sure that um our needs are being met with our food bank. Um, and uh, uh just so that's clarified out, I would appreciate that, but. Any other questions of the applicant?
Uh, I have a question for city staff. How does the bingo, I think this is one of the first ones we've done. Um, my concern is, is we're letting a, a business come. I know like with the liquor licenses and events, you have to get. Certain percentage goes to a charity and sometimes the charities aren't always taken care of, but it's, it's a fundraiser for the company itself, so. It's, it's, I mean, it looks to me a little concerning that it's a company that's just using a five oh one C three and it's one from, using ones from out of town, so I guess my. Maybe can we get a little update on how this process works or?
Yeah, and I probably refer that to the applicant, so I'm not sure how that works in terms of the license and the like proceeds and what they're going to.
Yeah, I'll have it. Um, April still email you, cause like I said, I'm, I don't know too much about the details of that part of it. Cause she's the one that does all the licenses and handles that part.
Yeah, so maybe Ms. Williams could gi- give a general of how, how the bingo licenses work. Uh, and then the applicant has to find a nonprofit, maybe talk through that process. Just, do you have that information?
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right now, this one is a transfer of location, so they currently have a bingo license at this location. Uh, it was transferred, I believe in about two, twenty twenty. There was a transfer of location from a bingo license to this location from the VFW. Um, now at this time, they're looking to transfer the Friends of the Food Bank license to this location. At, at the same location, so there's currently one there and then they're looking to transfer this one.
Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yeah, I kinda have concerns without anybody to answer the questions. I, maybe we would table it or turn it down and have them be prepared to come to the meeting and. I just have a hard time if it looks like a corporation's making money off of food, of a charity that's. And we don't know where the money, it just seems like there'd be a lot of questions and concerns just to rubber stamp this without all that knowledge, so.
So I would echo Jim's concerns.
Oh, yeah, thank you, councilman.
Yeah, I would too.
So uh procedurally then, I don't know, Ms. Williams or Ms. Gary, if uh, um, is it better for the applicant if we table this item for a future meeting? Uh, versus denying it, would they have to go through the entire application process again if we denied it?
Um, if they denied the application, if you denied the application tonight, that would be the recommendation that goes to the Arizona Department of Revenue. So if we're looking to bring it back to council with more information, tabling the item, we could, we could do that.
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor.
Uh, whether this, this is a public hearing or are you looking to make a motion? Let's open the public hearing and uh just see if any uh citizens would like to address the council on this item? Yeah, please, uh make your way to the podium.
Hi, I'm Frankie Lyons of Veterans United Arizona. We have a five oh one C three. We are applying for the same type of license. And what it is, the company um through their bingo machines that they have. The nonprofit gets thirty percent and it's all controlled by the state. So it's um, the individual doesn't control the money. It's controlled by the state and they send the nonprofit a check for what they've got. So it's pretty well protected and it'd be an asset to this community. We've applied for one, but we're on the waiting list, so. Um, just know that if anybody knows me, I make everybody accountable for what they do. And I've talked with her at length and she's talked with the city licensing at length. And um if you can table it until you get the information you want from her, that'd be great. Would appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during this public hearing? Alright, seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Okay, council member Campbell?
Uh, question. If I understand correctly, the state is highly regulating these, number one. Number two, there is revenues that are being produced. That the state will be giving back to the communities as well. So it is a tax generating fundraising. Opportunity that I think is new for all of us and everybody doesn't like new, but um it has been in place and it is. Something that has been approved by the state.
Yeah, thank you.
If, if there's no further discussion.
Moses, sorry.
Uh, I, I moved to table this item.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion from council member Campbell. Excuse me, uh, I'm thrown off right now. Council member Moses made a motion to table this item. Uh, seconded by council member Lane. Uh, is there any further discussion? Alright, seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. And so we'll hear this at a future meeting and uh you can work out uh with the clerk's office on how that'll work, so, thank you. Alright, item eight point two is Series Nine Liquor uh Store License. Store, uh, excuse me, Series Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Bash's number one sixteen at thirty-two sixty-nine Maricopa Avenue, number one twenty. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Michael Bash has applied for a Series Nine Liqu- Liquor Store License for Bash's number one sixteen. Located at thirty-two sixty-nine Maricopa Avenue, uh number one twenty. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Nine Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? Alright, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So this is uh, recently, the Bash's Stores were merged or sold with another company. And this is just the procedural piece uh to transfer over those licenses. Uh, any discussion or possible motion from members of the council?
Mayor motion.
Yeah, council member Lane?
I move to recommend the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Bash's number one-one-six. Three-two-six-nine Maricopa Avenue, number one-two-zero.
Second.
We have a motion from council member Lane and a second from council member Coke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point three is a Series Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Food City, number one oh eight, eighteen thirty-one Kiowa Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Uh, Michael Bash has applied for a Series Nine Liquor Store License for Food City, number one oh eight. Uh, located eighteen thirty-one Kiowa Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Nine Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of any members of the council from Ms. Williams? Alright, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion? Mister Mayor? Yes, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Nine Liquor Store License for Food City. Number one zero eight at eighteen thirty-one Kiowa Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from council member Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Alright, now we'll move on to item eight point one zero, which is Adopt Ordinance Number twenty-two dash one-two-eight-two. Approving a planned development rezone, amending the approved development plan of PD dash zero-two dash zero-zero-three. For nineteen seventy-five Daytona Drive, tract twenty-three thirteen, block one, lot one. In the single-family residential planned development uh district, adding a school building and a gymnasium. Mister Morris?
Honorable Mayor and Council members, thank you. Uh, here's the area map of the subject property. It, the property's about just over eight acres in size. Located on Daytona Drive, just east of Mulberry Avenue and near Green Tree Drive. It's home right now to three buildings, including a, a twenty-three thousand square foot church. A twelve thousand square foot educational building and a forty-three hundred square foot pavilion that's under construction. The zoning map for the property, uh the budding properties are all zoned single-family residential, uh which is R one. And they're developed with a mix of homes and a few vacant lots. In two thousand two, uh the property was zoned limited multiple family, R three multiple, multiple family. And it was rezoned to light agricultural planned development uh by an ordinance uh to allow the new church, the existing church now. And a total of three buildings on the site. That A one zoning district at time allowed buildings up to forty feet in height. In two thousand sixteen, the development zoning code was updated. As part of that update, the A one zoning district was eliminated. And the property was reclassified from A one planned development to uh the R one planned development. Because the surrounding properties were also zoned R one. Uh, the allowances and conditions of the previous planned development under the previous A one PD still apply. And that included uh the building height up to forty feet and a total of three buildings. This planned uh development amendment is required because the staff report from the two thousand two rezone. Suggested that the site is limited to the church and two other buildings, unless additional public hearings are held and public notice given. Here's the site plan that's been presented uh for the area. The site plan submitted with request shows the existing church, which is here kind of in the middle. Uh, an education building back behind the church and a pavilion out in front of the church that's currently under construction. Uh, the other two proposed buildings are shown here, so that's a total of five buildings, which is more than the three that were allowed. So they had to come forward for this revised plan. Here's a little more of a detail of the property. Uh, the, again, the two, the existing church is here, uh the existing education building behind it and the pavilion under construction. Uh, the two proposed buildings include a twenty-six thousand square foot uh church, I mean, excuse me, a two-story school building. And then a ten thousand square foot uh gymnasium on the property. The proposed structures are about fifty feet from the rear property line of these green, these houses on Green Tree uh Drive. And they, uh, the parking calculations provided for the entire project. Uh, show a re- uh, a total of three hundred and twenty-five parking spaces required. And they're proposing about three hundred and ninety-nine uh re- parking requirements to be provided, so. They're well over the required number of parking spaces for the property. The parks, so the parking meets the development code. Uh, the building elevations, uh elevations were provided for the school building. Uh, here it shows overhaul height about thirty feet. The building is designed with no windows facing those residential properties near it, uh along Green Tree. Uh, the building elevations for these, uh, the gymnasium were not provided. Uh, the planning commission heard this item at their January fifth meeting and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. I do have one note, um, this morning, the applicant provided a revised site plan. Uh, they may want to offer some um thoughts on some more information on that site plan. But the site plan you have before you is what was approved, uh, recommended for approval by the planning commission. With that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Morris. Uh, would the applicant like to uh present uh the, the change and uh give additional comments?
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Father Tronse Winkler. I'm the pastor at Our Lady of the Lake Catholic Church and School. And um, we have a school that's growing. And the site plan change really is to take the, the two-story building you see there. To keep the same footprint of the building, but to make it a one-story building. And uh, that allows us the space that we need and the classrooms we need for the near future. Uh, and actually for quite a ways in the future. Um, a, the second building that's on your site plan is a large, a gymnasium. Really imagined as a, a multipurpose building, right? Um, but in, in planning the multipurpose building. Uh, we were talking about, you know, how big, what do we wanna do in there, how, how do we wanna use it and all that stuff? And we decided that a good way to size it would be, that it should be able to hold a basketball court with some room around the sides. A gymnasium is not actually its primary purpose. That was just kinda came up in, how do we want it? You know, what do we wanna be able to do with it in that space? And so it is a uh multipurpose building. Uh, we look at being able to do that in a phase two, so I'll, I'll um invite Rob from. Um, Selberg and Associates to come up and to continue um, uh, to explain a little bit more about it. Um, the revisions that we did are based on a few things. Number one, uh, building is getting expensive. And we wanna be able to provide the space for the school that's already existing and already growing. Um, because we're running out of room in the building that we have and, or we will soon. Uh, and the second is uh that, things that were said and discussions that we've had with people, we wanna make sure that we are good neighbors. And we wanna make sure that we're uh attending to people's concerns, so. Uh, we did modify the plan somewhat, uh, considering the time schedule, we wanted to, to bring it to you. Because it's basically the same footprint for the building we're talking about. It's just one story instead of two. So I'll let. Uh, Rob from Selberg uh continue the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. With permission, may I hand these out to you? It may be easier for you to read them.
Yeah, if you will, just hand them to Ms. Williams there and she'll distribute them for us. Thank you.
Wonderful. What we're uh presenting today is just the uh site plan that Luke has put up on the screen. And then also a, and a floor plan that clarifies what we're looking to do there. When we had our, our neighborhood meeting, one of the things that came up was, the building was too tall. It didn't fit in the residential neighborhood. And it's something that we took to heart when we laid this new site plan out. Unfortunately, we didn't uh, you know. It, it's an evolving process design, so we ended up putting this site plan together and, and showing what is there. Uh, what you'll see is the plan that was approved by the planning commission. Uh, we don't stick out near as far. We're not as close to Daytona anymore, um, that we were originally. And that was one of the comments that came up. We're also going to a single-story building as opposed to a two-story building. Um, phase two is an, is a far-off future goal for the Catholic Church. Um, I'm a, a member of the Catholic Church as well and I know that, you know. The name of the game in the Catholic Church is fundraising and it always has been. Um, and it's one thing that, um, you know, you pass the collection plate and if you're blessed, you get a number of donations. Uh, in this case, we feel we'll have enough money to phase one in the, the, the first part of this process. And on your site plans, or sorry, floor plans that you were handed, it's the non-shaded part of the building. Uh, phase one is also the same as the plan that Luke could put up originally. Uh, the footprint hasn't changed except for an entry, um, vestibule that is about twenty by eight. Uh, so that's what we're presenting today. I know this is not typical. We did speak with, um, you know. The chairman of the planning commission to see if it was even worthwhile bringing this to you guys, but in the interest of transparency. And also in the interest of being uh open to everybody. He said, go ahead. This is something he thought he was in favor of. We're not asking for a bigger square footage. We're lowering the building. We're actually trying to, you know, keep in mind the uh. You know, what has been requested by the neighbors. So um, that really concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. There, uh, so on phase one would be what is the initial proposed two-story building? That still would be the phase one that would be built first?
Correct, but that won't be a two-story building. That will be a single-story.
Okay, so it'd be a single story with that same footprint.
Correct.
And then in a subsequent uh phase would be um this multipurpose facility that would jet out in front of it.
Correct, and so five to ten-year best case.
Okay, and then the uh windows, I guess, to the west, or the walls to the west, they still would have no windows?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any questions, uh?
You, you currently provide these, those school services, correct? Are, are we going to be expanding services or anything like that? Is this gonna create a greater capacity for you? There is a greater capacity because we need it, so the original plan is to uh, is to bring the school up to eighth grade. We're adding a grade here, so we're currently at fifth grade. We have fifth grade students. Um, so we're pre-K through uh fifth grade. And we plan to, for the next three years, to continue sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. Wonderful, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, are there any concerns about traffic patterns or creating a higher demand on this area? Uh, I, I know seven forty-five and two thirty don't drive past, you know, certain, certain areas of town kinda deal. Um, is, is this gonna affect us in any way? Luke, do you have any concerns?
Uh, I believe the, the, during the planning commission meeting, the question of traffic came up. It was felt there wasn't gonna be a major impact based on uh that hearing for traffic for this increased uh number of students. Um, if it, indeed, it did trigger some sort of threshold, we would, could require a traffic study or some sort of traffic report or analysis for the property. But at this point, we're not recommending that, that, that that happened.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, from the, from the layman's eye, it looks like you're set up to handle traffic more than most are. So I appreciate that, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I have two questions. Is there outdoor space for the kids to play? Like, is there like a playground area?
Yeah, so currently, we have a smaller playground toward the back of the current building. And then the playground space for, it's not really playground space, but outdoor space, there's kind of a courtyard facing the, there's already a courtyard that exists facing basically the west side of the building, which would be behind the proposed building and to the left of the church, which is right in the middle of the property, right? Indoor space, we do have the pavilion, St. Joseph's Hall, as we're calling it, right there. There is a large space in the current educational building, and then the future hope is to look forward to building a multipurpose room which will allow indoor space. Outdoor space, there's not, besides the playground we have there for the smaller children, there's not a playground for the older kids, like five through eighth grade, but there is space for them to be outside in a secure area.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and then the second question, is this part of the church or the school, is any of it going to be fenced in for security?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Campbell? Did you have, and then we'll go to Councilmember Lane?
I just want to say congratulations and thank you so much. I was, I taught religious education in your church, and this expansion is absolutely amazing, and I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approximately, how many students do you have in school now, and what is your projection when you're fully built out through the eighth grade?
We currently have, I think, what, 79, 78?
Ninety.
Ninety, okay, I'm sorry. I got my, yeah, 90. Got my digits mixed up in my head, so. We currently have 90 students, and the projection is basically tops out at basically 30 children per classroom. So about 250 students maximum. I don't think we would reach that because our goal is to kind of keep smaller class size, but if, we want to be able to accommodate children who come as long as we think we can continue to give them the attention they need and provide that classroom experience that the children, the students, and the families are looking for.
And do all the grades start at the same time and end at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, looking at the new proposed site plan, the flow actually is much better. I mean, I think the vehicle flow is going to be better. It's just unfortunate, it is out of the ordinary to do day-of council meeting changes when we can't engage the public on what that looks like, and so that's a bit of a challenge. But again, I do believe this flow seems one better for building costs and for phasing approach, but also when it's fully completed, the vehicle flow is going to be much easier to get, you know, children dropped off and picked up. And as Mr. Moses said, it's one of the better school sites that we have across the community. Any other comments before we open the public hearing?
One more question. Like, how big, how many people do you have attend your church on a Sunday, just to give an average of traffic flow?
This time of year, in excess of probably just around 3,000. In the summertime, it's probably about half that, honestly.
Right, thank you so much.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, and Rob, if you could just drop that site plan down so I can get a better view. Thank you. Yeah, if anyone would like to address this matter, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Mayor, Council, my name's Dante Marinelli, and I'm on the building committee for the new school. The one thing that we, I know it was a last-minute approach to come and bring it to council, we really tried to work on it to see if we could get it pushed through because right now, if we lose this date, we're talking about another two months before we can get it approved. That would force us to lose complete next school year that this would be built. So that's the only reason why we did approach this as quickly as we wanted. We didn't want to, but we needed to. And we also noticed, I would hope that you would recognize that it's a decrease. So we were actually approved for a two-story building, and we could build a two-story building, but now that we're going down to a one-story building, I think people would be more in favor of that than, and again, we were approved for two and went to one. The one thing that I would want to mention is that our average class size right now is between 15 and 17, so it is small. The 30 is a great opportunity, but remember, we're building one class a year. So right now, we're up to grade five. So to take that to 30 people, there's no way for the next five years we could even do that because these kids follow through year to year unless something happens where we get an influx of people that are interested in private schools. So that's where we'd like to keep it. And remember, only when you look at the plans, we're talking about eight classrooms in that building. So it's not like a thunderbolt, and I know a lot of you guys were interested in the traffic flow and things. You know, they've got 3,000 kids going in and out of Thunderbolt at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. We're talking at about a max, when we're maxed out, at maybe 170, 180. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for, or actually to staff maybe for staff recommendation and council discussion.
Honorable mayor and council members, thank you. Being that this is a slight change from what, this is a change from what the planning commission approved, staff would really recommend that the normal process would be, this would go back to the planning commission for their review and approval. Of course, the city councils, you're open to make whatever decision you like. I would do suggest if you're going to go move forward with this site plan, maybe propose a couple little changes to the suggested motion. Number one was going to be development shall substantially match the site plan provided with the request. That's assuming it was the request that went to the planning commission. So I would suggest a friendly change for that would be the site plan that was presented at the sound city council meeting, if you want to go that direction. There's also a condition number four on the proposed motion that building height for the new structure should not exceed 30 feet. I'm not sure what height they're going to request for or they need for these buildings. If you want to put a condition on that height, be a different height or one story or something, maybe something you can do. I think the rest of the recommended staff, recommended motions could remain the same. Thank you.
Will you go over number one for me one more time?
Condition number one is that the development shall substantially match the site plan that was provided with the request. So the site plan that was provided with the request is this site plan you see in front of you here with the proposed school and the gymnasium, two separate buildings with parking all between them, separating them. So that was what the city, excuse me, the planning commission recommended approval of this site plan. The site plan they brought forward today is the school building is one story, and it's about the same location, and then that's their Phase 1 and their future development. Phase 2 in their future development is the multipurpose room, which was going to be located down here and called the gymnasium, but now apparently it's a little different design. And when it's built, it's going to be connected to the new school. So I would suggest that typically with a planned development, we go off a site plan that's been approved by the council. So if you're going to approve this site plan, I would suggest we change that motion, make sure it's clear which site plan we're going to go with. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so based on the conversation, I obviously favor public input and what we presented in planning and zoning commission will follow through to what we do at the council. I am sympathetic that if we don't do action today, they may lose next year's school year, so I see both sides. If we were going to do, move forward with approval tonight, I certainly understand your recommendation, Mr. Morris, with item one, that it would be a site plan that was presented at council meeting so it's clear for future folks. When it comes to the building height, I could favor just a one-story building. I don't, 30 feet seemed palatable with the neighbors during planning and zoning. I don't know if multipurpose and gymnasiums need larger ceiling heights or whatever that looks like, but what is the will of the council on this action this evening? You want to, Councilmember Campbell, then we'll go to Vice Mayor Dolan.
Mayor, I would like a clarification from Mrs. Gary in regards to a proper way of motioning this to move forward based on the plans that are in front of us.
I think that, Councilmember, if you would, you'd make the motion that Luke is just suggesting to you, that you need to clarify that it's not the site plan that was part of the request. It was a site plan that was submitted to council tonight at the council meeting. As far as the height there, you could keep it at 30 feet, you can lower it to 15. Again, because staff just received this this morning, it has not been sufficiently reviewed by staff. It has not been reviewed by planning and zoning commission. It has not gone to a citizens' meeting for input from the citizens. It has not been to the public hearing before the commission as far as the site plan that's issued today.
So would it be fair to say that the, they already approved the 50-feet height, correct? Prior?
The 30 feet.
30 feet. Oh, it's 30?
Yes, 30 feet.
Okay, so the planning and zoning recommended that 30, in all the meetings that they went to, 30 feet was plenty for the two-story, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we could possibly motion to accept the building as it is, not the site plan that is presented in front of us with a height allowance of 30 feet, not to exceed.
Yeah, there's six conditions on the suggested motion. The only two that staff is, well, staff is recommending denial tonight and go back to planning and zoning commission, but if council decides to move forward, item one of the condition would be the site plan provided at the council meeting this evening, and then item four is if we have any thoughts on building heights not to exceed. Currently, from the recommendation from planning and zoning, it's coming to us with a 30-foot building height, and that conversation was a two-story building. So, you know, we could have discussion that not, a building height of one story, not to exceed 30 feet, if that's the will of the council, or have it go back through the process that Ms. Gary just reviewed, where they, citizen meeting, planning and zoning, and then comes back to us. So, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yeah, I have two questions. Was there any public concern or any public comments at the P&amp;Z meeting, either against it, and there were concerns that were brought at that meeting voiced to them?
I think there was one concern at the planning and zoning commission meeting about the neighbor, one of the neighbors concerned about the church property is quite a bit higher than their lot, their backyard, and people can see right from the church property into their backyard. They were concerned about privacy. They're on, I believe, on the bottom-left corner of the green tree, and they're not very close to, they're pretty far away, at least it looks like 50 or 70 feet away from the new building, so.
Is there a fence?
I don't know if there's a fence, though I think the applicant would probably know.
No, there's not a fence on that side of the property.
But there are no windows?
We addressed it, there's no windows on that side of the building, so that nobody would be able to be in the building and be looking out and be looking into the yard. Currently, the only way to, the only way to readily see the house is to walk along that driveway that's there and has been there for a very long time.
And then my second question is, if this is Phase 1 of Phase 2, and Phase 2 is not happening right now, couldn't we approve with what's already on, with the site plan, and with the height, couldn't they still build the single-story as they presented, and then the next step was sometime in the next so many years, they could come to us with Phase 2? Because couldn't they pull off Phase 1 with what's already in this, Luke?
Here's the site plan that was submitted originally, and it shows the proposed school building in the same location as they're proposing to build in the revised plan. So if we're going off that, yes, that, this would work for their proposed building if they want to move forward with it today with this previous site plan that was approved and reviewed and approved or recommended for approval by the planning commission. So that would do it, and then if they came back later and said, "Well, this gymnasium setup, the location here is not going to work for them," then they would need to come back and amend this approved site plan and go through that amendment process similar to what they're doing now.
Is that something for you guys that would work? I mean, it sounds like you can do Phase 1 as is and not have to change anything on the site plan, and it wouldn't delay anything? Am I?
I mean, that would work for right now. I don't want to cut off our options in the future. You know, we wanted to bring forward what it is we planned, what it is we hope for so that it's open, but as that goes, yes, that footprint is the same, and the building is basically in the same spot. I think we moved it, what, eight feet? We moved it just, we just moved it six or eight feet farther away from the church, but otherwise, it's in the same place, the same footprint of the building, just one story instead of two. So yes, that would, that would work for us now. I just don't want to cut off our options for the future, even though it is some years away.
Okay, well, it sounds like if we could still build it and it wouldn't, we'd get it for the school year. I mean, I'd be okay with that, keeping it the way it is. It's in staff review and through P&amp;Z, but I would hate to stop the project or slow it down. So if we, or if there's any, I guess, many recommendations from the city attorney or Luke, if there's any, with that in mind, is there any adjustments we would need to do to what we're going to approve now to give them that eight-foot leeway and such things like that so they can do the project right now?
Well, I thank you for the question. I believe all the conditions could remain unchanged per staff's recommendation. The site plan, the location of the proposed school building is within tolerance for design review for a site plan like this, so six or eight feet, in my mind, is not a big difference. I would consider it the same as the site plan.
And to Vice Mayor Dolan's point, you could start the process then to go back through P&amp;Z immediately, so you have the same, the same folks at P&amp;Z and the same folks here at the council and not wait the four or five years until Phase 2. You could actually start, you know, approve tonight what it is, you can start on your Phase 1, and also concurrently start going through P&amp;Z again to move the proposed multi-use building adjacent to the proposed school site now, even though you don't have intentions to build it for three to five years. So that process is going through, and again, it doesn't delay you for next school year if that, and then it allows us to properly vet through the neighborhood. I mean, certainly, you guys have been great neighbors to that neighborhood, been there, you know, since the 70s, so, but it's always good to ensure that the neighbors have that opportunity, so.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Motion? Wait, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Lane? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gary.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Dolan, I think that's a great idea. Just one consideration for the applicant, by going that route, it is going to be more expensive because obviously if you approve this tonight, then they have to go back through the amendment process again. So the best-case scenario would be just you direct it back to the commission, then it's not an additional cost to the applicant. We can do it in expedited process, go as fast as we can, get it to P&amp;Z, get it back to council, and move forward.
Ms. Gary, what would that timeframe be?
I don't know. Luke, do you kind of have an idea?
Timeframe for advertising purposes is have to go back to the planning commission. I'd have to get to the newspaper. We have to get the newspaper in by Thursday morning to get it on the March, the first meeting in March, which I think is March 2nd or 3rd for the planning commission, and then would have come on to the city council about a month after that. We could theoretically jump it up a little bit, maybe one meeting up, since you've already kind of aware of it through this, so it may be just a couple weeks after the planning commission, planning commission meeting, but theoretically, by the timeline, it could make it possibly to planning commission, March, first meeting in March, and then to the city council, maybe your last meeting in March or the first meeting in April.
Okay.
Can we get response from the applicant on that? If that timeframe works?
Yeah, would that timeframe, would that timeframe work for you to be able to start construction and not delay that school year, as Mr. Marinelli mentioned?
I have to rely on my contractor and architect for that, so I...
No kidding.
We have a very ambitious timeline to make this happen, so, as if anyone's familiar with construction, you know that things don't happen overnight. So we're already pushing it. I think losing a month would certainly be a detriment.
Okay. Mayor had a question. How much more would it cost, Kelly?
What?
You said there's going to be an increased cost, like...
An application fee?
Which is?
That filing fee is about $2,500 for a rezoned plan development.
I mean, is there any way we could waive?
$2,500 is, won't be an obstacle for us, I'm pretty sure, that we could find somebody to be able to afford that.
So if we were to present it and you reapply for the new addition, you'd be okay with that?
I think so.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I'm getting yes signals from the people I get advice from, so.
Is there any way that we could still move forward with the plan, and if it doesn't meet the needs, the council has a right to come back and say, you know, "This isn't what we opposed or we proposed" or whatever. $2,500, I know, Father, but it's a lot in this stage for a lot of us that are trying to raise this money. So I, yes, we would do it if we have to do it. I mean, that's... I mean, that's that's what we have to do. But I would be more in favor of, I I still do not understand if we go back and we're moving the building further away from the street, number one. Number two, we're connecting the buildings, so you're not going to have all of the play yards and things like that that might be involved in that section between the kids transferring school. The whole reason for that is to try and connect it. So the main campus is connected to the 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 multi-purpose rooms. Remember, during the summer and during the hot season, we don't have a play yard, really, for these kids to go eat. So right now, we're going to move them to a pavilion area, feed them lunch, do that type of thing, and then take them back to their classroom on opposite sides of the walkway. I would like to see it done within five to seven years. But the problem that we have and what a lot of people don't understand is we're still dealing with the archdiocese of Phoenix.
Right.
And they're tough and they want things done and proposed, and they're not going to prove a school without knowing what the total cost is going to be. Because we have to prove to them that we can raise the money in order to move forward on the gym or the multi-purpose room or whatever. So I I would ask, I don't know, I I would ask the city attorney, is there some way that we can get around? Proposing it, I know, proposing it in a sense.
She loves that verb.
I'm sure she does, she does. With the understanding that we're moving the building closer off the street as requested by one of the neighbors. We're taking the height of the building down to a normal one-story building. I think we've met everything that we possibly can meet to please everybody around us, but we need to build a school. Okay, and I I don't, I, the more we postpone this, and I know we can maybe push it through this and then another month, then it's going to come back to here. And we're just, we need to get a school built. And unfortunately, we can't lose another school year. Yes, could we build it that way? If we submit all that, we're still going to have to draw it. The plans are still going to have to be drawn, no matter what, to show the new building and how it's going to connect. So the costs are actually there for us. The the problem we have is you could come back in five years and say, you know what, we probably want to change this a little bit. We have new regulations, new things that would affect the rebuild and the redrawing of that building. So we're kind of caught in that mechanism. I I understand a hundred percent that you're not comfortable with just approving something without public input. But we had the input already. We've gone through that process. Now, that input means that we've taken it from two-story to one-story. From one story to a gym that we're pushing fifty feet back from the from the street level for the traffic flow. We're allowing our kids to stay indoors through the hot season and during the cold time, too, when the winds come up or whatever, to go from building to building. It allows us to secure that building, that was a big issue for us. To have a gym sitting out in the middle of a parking lot, how do you secure that? You know, with the fencing and all that around, you're going to have to, if you take a look, yeah. So where do we draw the fence lines? We can draw a fence line if that building's connected, because we only have a corridor in between to get people in and out. With security being a big issue nowadays, the closer we can bring everything to the major facility, the better we are. So I, if there's a way, great, if not, we fully understand it. Father's got the twenty-five hundred bucks, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
For the city attorney, forget the word getting around it. We are legally able to do this, right, as council? It has gone to planning and zoning, you know.
That's a, that's a good question for you. I mean, it's about the fundamentals of the process. Do you respect the process? Do you respect the laws in our city code that outline what you're supposed to do when you're going through a rezoning process? Yes, today, can you approve the site plan? There's not necessarily anything that is going to prohibit you from doing that. But this wasn't the site plan that was presented at the citizens' meeting. It wasn't the site plan that was presented at the P and Z meeting. There was no public input on this site plan. City staff received this site plan this morning, the eleventh hour, and now it's your being, now it's placed upon you unfairly or not, best intentions. That's great, I mean, the changes that they're making, I'm not seeing that there's a problem with those changes. It's the fundamentals of the process, it's respecting the process, it's respecting our code, it's respecting the things that we have to go through. And you you can you can accept the site plan, but are you going to do it next time that this comes to you? Is this going to start being something that happens all the time? Staff has put a lot of time into this process, your planning and zoning commission and the members that you appoint have put a lot of time and effort into it. And there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot more behind it, it's a lot more than just getting around it. I know you want to solve this problem and that's very commendable, but just think about, just think about all the other things that are surrounding that. And we will solve this problem, we will move forward, it can happen, we just have to be a little flexible in how we get there.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn, did you have?
My turn?
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah. Ms. Gary, thank you. You said things way more eloquently than I could have, because I had a feeling everybody in here was going to hate me when I said this. We have a process, we have to respect the process. We change it for you, then we got to change it for him, then we got to change it for her, then we got to change it for him. We have a process, we have to respect the process. Yes, we had input, the input is no longer valid because the rules changed. We have a different site plan now. So everything that you did prior to this doesn't matter, because the rules changed. So we have to respect the process, we have these rules in place, and we have them in place for a reason, so that everybody gets a chance to talk about it. We have a commission that gets to look at it, then they come to us with a recommendation. So my recommendation would be, let's go forward with what you presented before. If it passes, then you can move forward and build that. If you decide that's not what you want to do, then you can change that at a later date, and then that'll be your decision. But in my opinion, we need to respect the process and just go forward with what was on the agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council?
All right, we have gone through the public hearing, is there a motion that?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to approve ordinance number two-two dash one-two-eight-two, a plan development rezone amended the approved development plan of PD dash zero-two dash zero-zero-three for nineteen-seventy-five Daytona Drive, track two-three-one-three, block one, lot one, in the single-family resident plan development district. Adding a school building and a gymnasium with the following conditions, to use the site plan that they presented this evening dated two-eight with not to exceed thirty feet.
Councilmember Campbell, you, do you want the other two recommendations of two, three, five, and six included in that motion?
Nope.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
We need a second in order to have any further additional discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Lynn, did you have comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we're a lot of discussion here. With Ms. Campbell's motion and my second, we're skipping number two, and this is what Ms. Gary is telling us this is probably the most important step, correct?
Yeah, I don't think that there's any issues with any of the the conditions. I I think the only questions for the the conditions were the site plan that was tonight and then just making sure that we're clear on the height. But I don't think there's any issues with any of the other conditions, and those are really necessary for moving forward. I mean, you absolutely want this to go through plan review. It's been clear that they don't want the windows on that certain side of the building. And then the setbacks at least should be fifty feet from the property line, those those are established, there's no question, there's no controversy in those ones. So those really should be in the motion, I mean, if this, if this, hopefully, there's an amendment to the motion.
Yes, so currently, as the motion stated, the item two, three, five, and six are those recommendations coming from planning and zoning, and the suggested motion are not included.
If if it was amended to add number two, I'd want to go to that timeline. Mr. Moore said it could be the end of March, so there's no no development then. They can't do any building, anything until that number two is accomplished, correct? And that could take till the end of March? Are you following me? If we were to amend what what Campbell member, Councilmember Campbell said and add two in there. They technically can't do anything until this is done, correct?
Well, if I may, item number two is the site plan should be limited to those buildings shown, oh, the the site is limited to buildings shown on the site plan. Unless approved in the future after additional public hearings are held and public notice given.
Yes.
That's saying the site plan that, the the site plan that was in your packet originally, that's the site plan with the two buildings separated. That's the site plan that is presented today. I believe Ms. Campbell is saying that she's, her motion is to have the site plan that was presented this evening.
Right.
As replacing the site plan that was in your packet. And then I think, I believe she was saying remained that the building remained thirty feet?
Yes.
And then no other conditions, no other conditions on it?
Councilmember Lynn, so number two is only in the future. So whether you accept this site plan or the one that's in your packet, two is only for in the future, like ten years from now, if they want to come and change the site plan, they just have to go back through the process. That's all that two means.
Yeah.
If if, yeah, does that help?
Yeah, I think I'm just confused because with what she's motioning is not bringing this new plan today back to the public.
Correct, it is, you're accepting that plan that's right there on the floor.
So what number of these one through six would bring this back to the public, is that is that number two?
No, none of them would.
Nothing.
You would be approving this as just this one instead of what's in your packet, and they would move forward and be able to develop that. And somebody that just understands construction in today's world, they made this process better for the community is what it sounded like, number one. Number two, for them to draw a plan halfway through or do two designs is going to cost them more. We can send them back, which might cost them more. In the name of God, man, let's move it forward.
All right, so we do have a motion, a second, is there any for additional discussion?
I have a question for the city attorney. So if for some reason this motion doesn't pass, can we propose another motion or is it dead at that point?
Yes, yes, you may.
All right, we have a a motion from Councilmember Campbell, second from Councilmember Lynn. Any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion fails, five to two.
Is there another motion that the council would like to consider?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
I would make a motion, but I'm just trying to clarify, so we're basically just going to keep it as is right now, is what we had talked about earlier.
Keeping it as the suggested motion would allow them to start building immediately, the first phase that's proposed on the site plan that's in front of us today that went through the public process of P and Z. And then it would allow them the opportunity to go back through the process, but it would cost an additional approximately twenty-five hundred dollars to do so. And they could start that process tomorrow, or they could start it in in four or five years when they're looking to to start that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve-eight-two, a plan development rezone amending the approved development plan of PD dash zero-two dash zero-zero-three for nineteen-seventy-five Daytona Drive, track twenty-three thirteen, block one, lot one, in the single-family residential plan development district. Adding a school building and a gymnasium with the following conditions. The development shall substantially match the site plan provided with the request. Two, the site is limited to those buildings shown on the site plan unless approved in the future after additional public hearings are held and the public given notice. Three, the new building shall be set back at least fifty feet from the property lines. Four, building height for any new structure shall not exceed thirty feet. Five, windows providing views of the abutting residential properties shall not be located on the northwest portion of the new buildings. And six, design review for compliance with the development code and conditions of this approval shall be required for the project prior to a building permit issuance.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, and we have a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, six to one.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now we will move on to item eight point four, which is introduce ordinance number twenty-two dash one-two-eight-four, amending the city code chapter nine point three-two discharge of firearms to conform with ARS section thirteen dash thirty-one oh-seven, Captain Sterling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I clearly know how to clear a room for you. All right, this item is to introduce a proposed ordinance to amend city code chapter nine point three-two, which is our discharge of weapons. In an effort to keep our city code up to date, our city attorney, Kelly Gary, has discovered that our current language does not fully align with Arizona revised statutes. Chapter thirteen thirty-one oh-seven, specifically section C three, which covers weapons and explosives. The city had previously adopted an ordinance that restricting the discharge of a firearm within a quarter mile of any residence or as the terminology is occupied structure, which is allowed by state statute. But it does not contain all of the language from the statute, so this proposed change would add that language specifically without the consent of the owner or occupant of the structure, which is in accordance with the state statute. This proposal would also update the definition of what an occupied structure is and to match the definition that is given in state statute. So again, this is a housekeeping item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Captain, is there any questions of members of the council? All right, seeing that this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to introduce ordinance number two-two dash one-two-eight-four to amend city code chapter nine point three-two.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight point five is adopt ordinance number two-two dash one-two-seven-nine, amending city code chapter nine point one-six point one-six-zero aircraft and parachute landings and takeoffs to clarify landing and takeoffs and to allow commercial parachuting and hot air ballooning with a permit. Ms. Gary?
Mayor and Council, there was a lot of discussion on this item, and it was introduced at the last city council meeting. Ultimately, staff was directed to go ahead and and bring back this ordinance for adoption today, but to discuss helicopters separately and in more detail. During our review, most recently, we discovered that the word parachutes was inadvertently left off of the ordinance. So we are asking that you include the word parachutes in the very first sentence, where it says no aeronautical activity and it lists a whole bunch of different like aircraft and powered parachutes. When we added the word powered before parachutes, we didn't mean to take away parachutes. And for powered parachutes, we meant to have both, and so it was it was just an accidental removal of parachutes. And so staff does recommend the adoption of the ordinance with the inclusion of the word parachutes in that first sentence. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, any questions or Mr. Knutson, do you have any additional comments on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, council, I I guess, you know, this was discussed in 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 more detail at the last council meeting when the ordinance was introduced. Direction coming from council to staff was to bring back this language. And then we did have the identify the caveat that Ms. Gary identified. And then we'll be scheduling time at at a future airport advisory board meeting, as well as our airport manager, Damon Anderson. We'll have some conversations there with the with our board and at what we call our terminal talks, where we get our users at the airport and and try to generate some conversation there on a future parallel track. So that's the direction that the council heard, or excuse me, staff heard, and that's what that's what's before you this evening. Again, the inclusion of the word parachutes in that first sentence would eliminate the random chance of a recreational skydiving activity that would that would take place. And and include that with the rest of the unauthorized uses unless by special event. Then, of course, by commercial activity would be applied through a through a process with the city as well.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, so the conversation that we had at our last meeting during the introduction was this will allow for an operator or parachute operation to get a a permit to allow that operation to occur from the airport and then also the use of commercial hot air ballooning. So balloon enthusiasts that do it for recreational, they they're fine, but this would be the commercial activities. And again, as Mr. Knutson mentioned and Ms. Gary had mentioned, additional separate discussion on helicopters going through a public process to have that further discussion. Are there any questions, comments, or thoughts from members of the council before we open the public hearing?
Just a thought.
Yes.
I've spoke with quite a few people and they said the residential hot air ballooning, which everybody says is okay. It's the, it says commercial parachuting, and then it says and hot air ballooning with a. and then it says and hot air ballooning with a permit. So those words are kind of a little bit off to me. I don't, anyhow, I'm sure we'll figure out the verbiage. But what I'm most concerned about is I've been told that hot air ballooning is as dangerous as helicoptering when you're dealing with the gas and the fire. I mean, I don't know for sure. I would love your opinion on that as a hot air balloon person. But they did say it's extremely dangerous if you don't know what you're doing. Is this correct? Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yes, hot air ballooning is extremely dangerous if you don't know what you're doing. No, I can, hotter ballooning?
But if you know what you're doing, is it dangerous?
There's danger in every, they say you're more likely to get in a car accident on the way out to the balloon than you are in the balloon. You're actually in a big parachute, but we also don't have helicopter festivals, so. No, ballooning is, you know, I, I haven't heard any concern about this. I guess what specific concern they're worried about of the safety of ballooning. Like I said, we have the balloon fest every year with hundreds of balloons. So I guess I, like I said, yes, I can say it's safety, it is safe. I guess unless there's more detail that they want to know, but.
Okay, thank you.
And the suggested motion, or based on the feedback that we gave staff last meeting, is that it actually is talking about commercial. So the, the title talks about hot air ballooning, but it is commercial in actual motion. So, and that's based on our, our feedback. So it would allow the aircraft and parachute landings and takeoffs, clarify the laying, the landing and takeoffs to allow commercial parachuting and hot air ballooning with that permit.
Okay, that's the way I read it. But then just a minute ago, you just said, you know, anybody can, if it's your private, you can hot air balloon without a permit.
There's a current process already for, for those folks.
Okay.
Yeah, outside of this.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Morgan Brayton. I live here on Starland Drive. I wanted to address Nancy's concerns on that. I am the other balloonist here in town, besides Jim Dolan and the other gentleman that's here. Terrible, I just forgot his name.
Gary.
Gary, Gary Amar. However, I am a commercial pilot. I have been flying balloons for almost forty years. I owned a hot air balloon ride business in Albuquerque before I retired and moved here for almost thirty-two years. I can tell you ballooning is very, very safe. It is highly controlled by the F A A. In order to take people up for hire, you do have to have a commercial pilot's license, which means me as a commercial pilot, I had to pass the same, the same written test that a seven forty-seven pilot had to pass in order to get my pilot's license commercially rated. Now granted, it was geared toward balloons, but it was a very strong and restricted sport when it comes to commercial ballooning. Matter of fact, the F A A right now is having a huge discussion. They're getting ready to implement mandatory medical class certificates for commercial pilots flying rides, which has not been something in the past. Now, I am a commercial pilot. I do not fly commercially here. I do not want to ever do that again. I'm semi-retired. I just want to fly for fun. But I just wanted to address your concerns that ballooning is very, very safe. Statistically speaking, it's more dangerous to walk down a sidewalk than it is to fly in a balloon. So you don't have to really worry about people's concern. Most of that is all designed for people that just don't understand, number one, how balloons work, and number two, the requirements we have to go through in order to pilot them.
But can anybody just fly a balloon if they want to recreationally? Or no, you have to have a license?
In order to fly a balloon, period, you have to have an F A A pilot's license to fly one.
You answered my questions. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter?
Is there, is there anything about the ultralights that fly? Do they have to take off from a certain place, or they just take off in the road? Seems a little bit.
Yeah, so they.
On, on parachuting, is there a designated landing zone that they have to land in?
Yeah, this code would clarify the, the action in front of us tonight, where they would have to have a location, a landing zone, and they'd have to have a relationship with their landing zone within the city. So that's, that's what this would spell out in this code change.
In air balloons, I rode one down by San Diego, and when we landed, we flipped over.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Yeah. All right, any additional comments? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to make an ocean, or I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve seventy-nine, amending city code nine period one-six period one-six-zero, aircraft and parachute landings and takeoffs, but adding parachutes to the first sentence to be included in the aeronautical activity that requires a special event permit.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, and a second from councilmember Coke. Any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight point six is adopt ordinance number two-two dash one-two-eight-zero, approving a planned development rezone for thirty-seven oh-two Indian Hills Drive and three-six-four-one and three-six-five-one Buena Vista Avenue, track twenty-two oh-eight, block thirteen, parcel L, and track twenty-two seventeen, block nine, lots three and four, from residential single-family R one district to limited multifamily R three district to limited multifamily planned development district, not to exceed six point nine-nine units per acre. Mr. Morris?
Honorable mayor and council members, thank you. The subject property is located in the southeast area of the city. It's generally located on Buena Vista Drive between Oro Grande and McCollough Boulevard South, just across the street from police station, oh, excuse me, fire station number three. It's roughly a large triangular piece of property of about five points three-quarter acres, five and three-quarter acres. There is this larger, larger parcel is called parcel L. It's a large flag lot with access onto Indian Hills Drive. It's about five, just over five acres. There are two other pieces of property associated with this request. They are the two lots here on Buena Vista Avenue. They're about point three and point four acres in size. This, the combined properties have a thirty-foot access off of, again, Indian Hills through a flag lot connection, and then the, the frontage of these two on Buena Vista. The property is zoned a couple of different zoning districts. The vast majority of it is this parcel L, which is zoned R one, single-family residential. And the, the two properties on Buena Vista are zoned R three, multiple family. The properties around are mostly a development of single-family homes with a couple vacant lots, and then some multiple families homes along Buena Vista with some more vacant lots. To the south across, across Buena Vista is, again, the fire station and a school district parcel that are all zoned multiple family R three. Here's a conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant. It's showing the property overall. So Buena Vista Drive, oh, Avenue's down here at the bottom of the screen, Indian Hills along the top, and Chiricahua along this right-hand side. The property has some slope to it. It loses about thirty-five feet in elevation from the top down toward Buena Vista Drive. It drops about thirty-five feet. Site is approximately a hundred eighty-five feet of frontage along Buena Vista, and about, again, thirty feet along this flag lot access on Indian Hills Drive. Upon the development, the property is anticipated to have its main access off Buena Vista with a secondary access or emergency access off of Indian Hills. For general planning purposes, the applicant provided this conceptual plan showing forty detached units with single-family units with attached garages or carports, some additional parking areas. There will be private streets. And then here's a rendering they've provided that shows the property. Buena Vista here at the bottom, Indian Hills here in Chiricahua on the right-hand side. It's anticipated the dwelling units would be offered for sale as townhome condominium units, meaning the buyer would own both the dwelling unit and the property, the property under it and the dwelling unit. The conceptual plan also shows a pool, cabana, internal driveways, and parking areas as part of the condominium common areas. Project will be subject to design review approval process and prior to building permit issuance, and the condominium plan review process prior to creation of the condominium for the subdivision. The planning commission heard this item at its January fifth meeting and recommended denial by a vote of six to zero. The commission members felt the proposed unit density was not appropriate fit for this particular area. Based on the planning commission's recommendation, your suggested motion in your packet is for denial of the request. One final note, on January eighteenth, the city clerk's office received a written protest opposing this request. It was determined that is a valid protest. It met the threshold for the number of lots in the square footage overall for triggered the protest. So it shall only become effective upon a vote of six out of seven of the council members. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of Mr. Morris from members of the council? Right, the applicant is here. Mr. Wood, would you like to make a presentation? Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Lynn has a question for Mr. Morris first, and then we'll turn over to the applicant.
This is kind of a crazy question, especially with how Havasu is developing right now. But what is the normal like this area? What we would normally see of how many homes would be fit in this? Does that make sense?
I, I think if, if, Steve, I can just work through your question. You're wondering for a lot this size or a parcel this size, how many homes could fit on there, single-family residential home?
That would be normal, not the little, little ones or like what we see, what we've seen in our older development, I guess.
In the R one zoning district, a minimum square footage is ten thousand square foot per property with a sixty-foot frontage and a minimum one hundred twenty feet deep. So you're going to have to get, and have at least ten thousand square feet. For something that size, it's an odd shape. If it was a rectangle, it'd be easier to work with this triangle-shaped piece of property. It's a little more difficult because you'd have to have a road coming in and have like lots coming off of the, like a cul-de-sac road coming in. I would suggest the density would be four to six units per acre generally is what's allowed for single-family residential. So depending upon the design and the size of these, they, they might be able to get, I'm just guessing, ten to twelve, I'm thinking full-size R one size lots. I mean, and I haven't drawn anything out or scaled anything, but that's just the idea.
That's exactly what it is asking. And right now, what they're kind of showing on their conceptual is forty.
Yes, they're showing forty small homes condominium style, where they own the, the land under the, the footprint of the home and the home.
I have a question for Mr. Morris as well.
Yes.
So we've already voted on this once. What, can you tell us the changes that were made from the last time we voted this down to where we are now?
Well, I, I believe this went to the planning commission a couple of years ago. The planning commission recommended denial. It was scheduled for city council action. The applicant withdrew that before the city council could hear the item. So I don't think it made it to the city council a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Woods.
So.
Is the microphone on real quick? Is, is that microphone on? Is the green light on? Okay, if you can just bring, thank you.
I'm going to answer those questions. And then can I request, so I got some topics, and if you have questions, go ahead and put right in so we can get this over and going.
We're just going to get that microphone working.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
And then do I get a chance to rebut all the people against me?
Yeah, Mr. Woods, it's your, it's your opportunity right now. Like, give us, give us what you got.
Okay, so why does Havasu need this? Havasu doesn't have a workforce. I mean, as a business owner and everybody else, we are struggling. I mean, struggling. And if you look at the little things on there, what is it? It's one ninety-two to three ninety-nine, there's zero houses for sale. Zero. Then if you look at the next picture, condos and co-ops, there's twenty-one. And these are all, these are not new ones. These are forty years old. Maybe you get lucky, you get one that's twenty. Townhome or houses, which I was surprised, there's fifteen. But there again, they're at the turn of the century. It is what it is. I mean, Havasu's grown up really fast, and we need to, we need to grasp this. I mean, it, it's a struggle to, to do business here. I mean, nobody could have, all the, the good labor is unfortunately leaving. You know, the, the law enforcement, the restaurants, I mean, the schools, the teachers. The teachers can't even afford to live here. I mean, this is ridiculous, the hospitals. So I mean, someone has to do something. And I have enough developments going where this is not going to be the normal tiny home thing. We're going to expand it and just try to attract some people that could stay here and help the whole. I, I cannot solve the problem, but I could start, and everybody else could start. The next thing. Zoning as it is, here's, here's the answer to your question. Without too much permission, this is the reality that we could do. We can get fourteen homes in, on Indian Hills that will only access off Indian Hills. Down below on, on Buena Vista, we could do twenty-two-story units that only access of Buena Vista. To me, this is a mess. I mean, I wouldn't like to do a development like that because it, I got to put my name behind this? I got to go see you in the grocery store? I don't want to be that guy that's like, oh, yeah, he got me. You know, the, this is ridiculous. But, but that is the, that is the reality without asking permission what we can do. And what we're proposing is a little different. That's why we want the R three to be able to stretch our wings and, and do a nice development to add to the community. Any questions on that?
Councilmember Lynn?
So, so right now, the way that it's done, they can do this? This is what he can do?
This is the first time staff's seen this. There's no dimensions or anything. We have not reviewed this, so we don't.
But, but I'm close because you said twelve, I got fourteen. So in, in Luke hasn't seen this, but we, we're pretty good at this. We've been doing this a long time. So this is pretty close.
So are you, are you looking to change from the forty that we saw earlier to this fourteen?
No, I'm, I'm showing you what we can do.
Okay.
Which doesn't make sense to me because everybody is complaining about the traffic, and I'm going to force fourteen units bumper-to-bumper that could be Airbnb out Indian Hills. That's, that's ridiculous, but, but it could be done. You know, and then put another twenty units on Buena Vista that are jam-packed boxes, just, you know, it, it could be done, but that's just, that doesn't develop the property in its potential, how's that?
Yeah, well, none of this can be done without a rezoning. Right now, one home can be built.
That can be done without rezoning, right there. That's it.
On this, on the larger L parcel?
Yep.
Okay.
Because that's single-family, so we got fourteen units that are single-family in the back that I could use that Indian Hills access. We're just, make it private. Done.
It's a ten-foot access, you can not.
It's a thirty-foot access.
Not wide. It's ten, thirty long.
Yeah, but you'll get an opportunity when we open the public hearing, yes.
So that, that is legal by the zoning. The Buena Vista is, that's, that's R three, so there's as many as you could fit.
Question. You purchased this land from the city, correct?
Yes.
But when did you do that?
Right after I bought Buena Vista and noticed that it was empty.
And how many developments have you done in this community, do you think?
Five, with, with eight in the process, maybe ten.
Approximately, how many homes have you brought to the community, do you think? Overall?
At least forty, fifty, sixty.
Forty, fifty, sixty, you've added.
In all different ranges. I mean, we got houses in the foothills and.
Right, that you've added to our inventory, which actually, we all know this is a supply and demand issue. There's nothing more than that. It's a supply and demand issue. Most of these that have come out on the city that I have been disappointed with to be putting these kind of develops in, developments in, because there's only one way in, one way back, and they really affect the community. This one here, you're looking right across the street from there. That boulevard can take a bunch of M threes, or you know, like the multifamily threes. You have two accesses here. I'm, I'm confused why they denied it, but again, that's their right to do that. On this one here, are you going to fence this property in like the projection picture?
We have to.
Okay.
And I'm, I got that in my presentation, and we're going to cover all that, too.
Okay, I didn't want to, I'm not trying to jump forward. I just wanted to ask some really great questions because most of your developments that I do see that get approved, some people don't like them, but I, I would regularly deny this, but I like this particular project.
And you know what I say, and maybe not everybody's going to like this? Nobody likes storages, but the more you build, the more they sell. So I mean, it's the people. It's not personally what you like. If they want it, I mean, every development that we've done is sold out. I mean, like, done. Had I hold them, I could get more money, but they're, they're just sold. I mean, like, done. Had I hold them, I could get more money, but they're, they're just sold out. So there is a need. Unlike, you know, like storages, it's just, it's crazy. The more you, you would have thought 10 years ago it'd have been done, but approve some and they'll be gone.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, we're gonna let, uh, Mr. Woods give his presentation and let us, or, and take any questions.
Okay, so we're good on the zoning as it stands, right? We're clear? So to clarify what we want is we want a R3, and it's only because the city's behind on, on, what we're doing is a little different than the normal condominium R3 multifamily. What we're, what we're doing is, uh, more, well, here, let me, let me go back. The, the, on, on, okay, go ahead. What we're not gonna do is what those other developments, go back please. What is that?
Where, Sam? Where should I go? Here?
No, no, forward, forward. Forward.
Okay, so clarifying zoning.
So, so that development, we're not gonna do like that, which that is on the corner of Oral Grande and Buena Vista, which you can see Rancho Buena Vista's behind it. So we're, we're not gonna jam them in like that because we're being held to 40, which if I was to get R3 per acre, I, I could fit like 70 on there. So the planning and zoning said, hey, look, we're not gonna give you 70. We'll give you 40, which I'm like, all right. So it's, it spreads them out. Those are maximized for density. If, if you go to the next picture, there's another one on Shoshone. Same thing. It's in R3, but it's maximized for density. So as many as you can get in there. The next one, same thing, Swanson Riverwalk. There's 12 units. Actually, I could have put 13 in there, but I felt bad, so I took one out and put a pool, which is, this is for a better development. The next picture. So again, we're not doing this. Esperanza, which was highly successful. We're putting Encanto next door, which is already starting to go for sale. So this is the things that, we got a communication breakdown. Everybody's saying, I'm gonna put tiny homes, I'm gonna jam them in there. We're not doing that on this project. We're gonna introduce more product. I have an inventory of tiny homes, so we have to think towards the families, you know, the workforce. What do we got next? What we're doing here is, uh, so everybody says condos, can townhomes, land dominions is the best that defines what we're doing. So we're not putting condos and townhomes if everybody thinks you're stacking them. A land dominium is, is a single-family residence. You own the outside of the building, you own the ground underneath you, you own 15 feet above you, so it's a house. Qualified for a conventional loan, so anybody can get the loan for it. What do we have next? There you go. So if you, if you look at the difference between this project and, uh, and the other ones, i- it's a little more spacious. It's like a little bigger community. How's that? It's like a neighborhood, which we were gonna put the gym, the pool, the clubhouse. I think the next one shows, so you see by spreading them out to 40, there's spaces in between. They're not, they're not six feet apart like all the rest of them. Which that allows to get some four-bedroom, no, three-bedroom, two-car garages in there. This is a conceptual. I can't get a survey on it because the surveyor has no labor, which brings us back to the other problem. So I've, I've been on him for two years to give me a survey. It's such a big job. He can't make his other clients wait while he pulls up all the manpower for this. The next. This shows you compared to the other developments we do, it's, it's way more spacious. So the next one is some of the other, we had concerns that nobody wants tidy homes, that we need bigger stuff. So here's something that we're, Luke hasn't even seen this stuff yet, that we're developing. It's a three-bedroom, two-car garage. The next one, it's a little better. Next. There you go. So it's like a family house, which we, we feel we could put some of those in there. But I don't wanna spend the money unless we get the right zoning because I'm just chasing my tail. Questions?
Does that conclude your presentation?
No, no, no.
Okay, yeah, how would you finish your presentation and then we'll, I'll open up to questions?
Okay, so here, here we go. Neighborhood concerns, the neighbors, and I wanna be a good neighbor. They, they're concerned about traffic. So allowed to do this development, Indian Hills is not gonna, it's only for fire and emergencies. That's it. So everything is gonna be directed off of Buena Vista. Buena Vista was designed for high school, so the traffic is not gonna be an issue. Parking. So parking, boat storage, trailers, et cetera, it's an HOA. It's, it's dictated what they could do. I mean, and that's the end of that story. I mean, it's just, it's not gonna happen. The problem is not there. And here's some of the, go ahead. So here's some pictures of the developments. These are from this morning, so we don't have parking issues. You can click through those. That's Kiowa Industrial. There, there, nobody's, everything's good. Everything's neat, tidy. There's Esperanza. There's not a bunch of cars everywhere. Okay, here we go. So I think this is why the problem is with the neighbors is they have their own parking problems in their own neighborhoods. Is, here's some of the pictures from this morning that, of the surrounding neighborhood, where they have cars and boats in their front yards. If you could click through those. It is your right. So our, our development's not gonna have that kind of problem because it's, it's by an HOA. You know, and it is, it is not their right because they choose to live in an HOA, so everything has to keep neat and tidy. So these pictures, everybody says that development doesn't belong in that neighborhood. So here's some of the past developments that we've done, which are in similar situations. Like, uh, that's Masters on Palaverde, where you'll see it's surrounded by single-family residents. You got another one? That's Mastro's. Look behind it, on the side of it, same thing. Keep going. That's it? Oh, you're moving pretty quick then. Well, Luke goes back, there's, there's Esperanza. Everything else is, it's, this is not an uncommon thing though. I do understand that if you pass this, it sets precedence on those big lots, which I know is a concern for everybody. This lot is unique in the sense that it's connected to multifamily. Like me as a developer, if I bought another lot off you, I wouldn't, and it was a single family surrounded, I would never dare to try to change it because I know what, what is acceptable and non-acceptable. This one is, was questionable enough that they, they moved to approve it because it was connected to R3 and they know we need the housing. I'm ready.
Okay, that concludes your presentation. So you've mentioned a few times that, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it, but it's coming to us with a recommendation of disapproval.
I, I say Luke.
Luke, okay, yeah, so the, the.
The, the other one was, there, you know, and you got a mob behind you. It's just intimidating, I think.
Oh, no, I just wanna make sure we're clear that it's coming from, from planning and zoning.
They moved to approve it. How's that?
Um, coming to us with a motion or a recommendation of disapproval.
Luke went with, they, they, yes, to approve it from the planning and zoning, which they shot it down.
Yeah.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. When this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it went with the staff's recommendation for approval, uh, based on just the numbers, the, the figures. Uh, obviously, there's input from the neighborhood and concerns from the neighborhoods that the planning commission heard, and, uh, they made their decision to recommend, uh, denial, and that's the same decision they made previously, and it's come to you with that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we've never voted on this to this level. There's one other thing, is I know there's 49, 50 people here that are against it, but you guys represent 56,000 in the city. I mean, I, I don't, I don't get it.
All right, uh, questions or comments from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Uh, how wide are those access points into the lots, into the land?
On Buena Vista, I believe it's, uh, 30 feet. No, no, no. Buena Vista's 65, sorry.
65 feet wide?
The main axis in the Buena Vista, so it's two lanes.
So you're, okay, and then the other access point?
The other axis is not an axis. We're only leaving it there for the fire department and emergency vehicles.
How, how do you, how does that work? How do you only restrict that to fire or emergency vehicles?
Because we design the HOAs, so we could say, hey, look, you.
Is there, is it just a rule or are there gates or?
No, we, we could have chains with gates and we'd supply everybody with the keys. As far as emergency fire, just like the fire alarms, we're gonna give them keys for the box there. But that would only, that's only because the fire trucks probably couldn't make it in all the way to, from Buena Vista, so we'd give them access there.
The fire trucks wouldn't be able to make it all the way through from Buena Vista?
There's a rule with something that's 150 feet or more, right?
Chief? Can, can you weigh in? Sorry.
Uh, on this project that I'm looking at for the first time, and we've seen it, is this is a, a one-way in, one-way out. Uh, so this would be recommended for all sprinklers. Um, so that would be protected that way. I don't have the particulars for you at this time, but I can get that information for you talking to Fire Prevention in regards to the access to this. The fire station is directly across from this facility on Buena Vista. I don't know why the access point for fire would even come into play. Our, our direct route would be on Buena Vista.
You'd have to drive five minutes to get to the.
Yeah, it might be for additional units, but, um, a- at this time, I, that's the logic I can give you for this particular development.
Are, are these normal-sized roads, Sam?
Yes. Well, not city standards probably, a little, little thinner than that.
Uh, specifics?
Specifics. I mean, it's, it's, it's a conceptual plan. So I mean, are we gonna make it two ways? Yes, we're not gonna make a one-way street all the way through. So 30, 40 feet.
And is that enough for a, a, a fire truck to go through?
Yep. Councilmember Mayor, based on the conceptual, I don't have the, the dimensions for this, so I'm not gonna state something that is not fact. So, uh, obviously, we need to make sure that we can get in their access points, but this is a conceptual drawing. Until I get further information, I, I can appropriately answer the question to you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Yeah, Councilmember Moses, this is a, a, currently a zoning issue in front of us today, so these particulars will come through, uh, through the, the planning and zoning.
So this wouldn't be approved if a fire truck couldn't get through?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, later on down the road. Like, it would have to be.
Yes, that discussion would happen at that time.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may elaborate a little bit, uh, well, this would go through the subdivision process, and part of that process is routing for comments from other divisions, including the fire department. Now, look at the right-of-way widths, the access, and make sure that's all gonna be safe and work for the, the, the city and the, the fire department and the police department and all the emergencies. So that's something that would be reviewed through the subdivision process.
Appreciate that clarification. I always put the cart before the horse, I feel like. But, uh, um, and I mean, with your HOA, are you planning on making sure that your land dominions don't turn into hotel dominions?
Right, on the, on all the, the banks don't like to loan on something that could be Airbnb'd, so we put a 30-day minimum, which pretty much scares away the Airbnb.
So your 30-day minimum will?
Oh, yes. It has to be.
Okay.
All, all the other ones, you have more restrictions, which is gonna keep the development a lot nicer versus just a common neighborhood.
Hey, Councilmember Lynn?
Can you tell us what the price range of these would be?
The price range is, we're hoping to be way under 400. Would, would those be at $40 a sheet? I mean, what, we're gonna be, we're gonna fill in the end of market. We're gonna, we're gonna fill the hole that there's nothing in. I mean, you gotta realize that I ran you those con, those con, the Zillow things, and from 192 to 399, there's nothing on the market, so we're trying to keep it below that.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. That wasn't the number I wanted to hear, so I guess.
But, but that's a good point. Doing the 14 homes that I'm allowed to do, then you, you're forcing me into the market, which is 6, 700, which does no good for the city.
With, with that comment, I think with all the examples you showed with these, they are all over Lake Havasu right now. Like, I kinda feel like we're picking not my backyard by telling, if, if you were told no tonight. But I also know that we're looking at a crisis for affordable housing and 400,000 doesn't really fit that.
No, no, under, under 400.
389?
We have, we have, we have, no. Today, today we have stuff on the market for 259 to 379.
And then there's a.
Just on, on this type of product.
And then there'll be an association dues.
Yeah, the association is, if there's a pool and stuff on this, it usually runs 175, which includes water and trash. With the water, we have a problem with the city, so I'm, I'm working on doing something different with that. Cause the dues, the dues used to be 75 a month, but I had to adjust them because we had a problem with the increase in water and sewer.
Yeah.
Which, which helps for the affordable housing.
Any other questions or comments of members of the council before we open the public hearing?
Uh, just a comment. Again, city government cannot really fix our workforce housing issue. What we can do is assist the developers to build developments. Not all of them are great. Some of those tiny homes that I have seen are not so good. I will be the first one to admit that. But if we keep on denying the developers and causing them to jump through hoop after hoop after hoop, I remember one of our development meetings, I ended up spending two hours after our meeting talking to them about staying here in our community. So what we need to do is be understanding that Lake Havasu City is grown out. When it, when it's developed and completely filled up, there's gonna be things coming into our neighborhoods that we don't want. And it is what it is, but supply and demand, the more supply we get, the less the demand, and hopefully then your prices go down. It's the only thing I know about capitalism. I maybe don't understand government stuff, but you cannot regulate the heck out of this.
All right, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yeah, just a couple of points to remember when we're talking about how great this is for affordable housing. My concern is, is, is affordable housing, housing is, is kind of a myth in Havasu right now because e- even if these were 300,000, I guarantee you'll sell every single one of them. And the question is, how many of them become vacation homes, second homes, third homes? Um, you know, unless we have, in my opinion, unless we have rentals, a vacation out-of-towner is not gonna come in and put a 12-month lease down on a house. So I guess that's, that's my biggest concern when it comes to, you know, yes, we need affordable housing, but we need workforce housing and.
You, you'd be surprised, I was surprised that who buys these? And I would say, I'm not gonna lie to you, there, there is maybe 20% that gobble them up, but they re-rent them. You know, do I agree with the rent they're charging? No, but a lot of retired lately, especially in the Swanson Riverwalk, a lot of young people that are, that are working out of their houses. I, I was very surprised at who bought them, but they're not, I don't, eh, maybe 5 to 10% are actually vacation rentals. Just knowing how dense they are, I could tell, and I see who's there. So it's really, I was surprised at that. I thought they'd be gobbled up and they'd be vacant.
And then my other question was, I, I'm getting deja vu. Haven't we had this specifically? And then my other question was, I, I'm getting deja vu. Haven't we had this specifically? I know we may, we didn't vote, but we had this discussion in front of council prior. Am, am I right? Cause we had people-
Not this particular, uh, not this particular site, uh, in front of council. We had a different site that is in a similar neighborhood. Yeah, it was a different city lot.
Okay.
Yeah, but not this one.
Not this specific lot?
And this specific lot, like I said before, is, is attached to R-three. So by no means would I try to pass a lot that's surrounded by R-one. It's just, it's not, I, I know Luke, it's not gonna fly. If he, if he's not behind it, then I don't push it. That's my rule.
All right, uh, any other comments before we open the public hearing?
One more comment. I'm gonna put this on public record. The only way we, that a government can save workforce housing is to build an affordable housing complex where our tax dollars are going to be funding the lower rents. And I don't think most people are telling me they want to do that. The other thing we cannot do is go in and start dictating what HOAs can do, or who we sell them to, because the government does not have the right to go in and, and, and who's gonna audit that? Like, oh, what does your HOA say? Did they stay thirty days? Did they say fifteen days? I am so concerned about some of these conversations out there about workforce housing, and how the government is going to come in and dictate how the developers are gonna build it, sell it, who they're gonna sell it to. I've been told, you better not sell it to Californians. How are you gonna stop them from that? This is just not anything in government that I think is feasible. What is feasible is to look at a local developer that's been doing pretty nice work in this community. Not every one of the things he's brought to the table have worked. And this looks like one that might be able to help. But come on, everybody, we just need to realize we cannot over-govern workforce housing. We have to depend on developers to put their money and risk getting us more inventory. There, I said my point.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone here on a zoning issue. So we're talking about zoning of a particular land, so we're, we're not over-regulating. It's, it's a zoning issue that we're hearing the matter, so.
At, at that price point, there, there is, I showed you, there is nothing. So I mean, that qualifies as affordable for Havasu. Unfortunately, Havasu's expensive.
All right, Mr. Woods, we're gonna go ahead and open up the-
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, so the only concern really on this, Luke, is really it was a lot of citizen input and it was zoning saying no, but there's no reason why he couldn't do what he wants to do here, correct?
If the request goes through as proposed, um, as he's proposed it, uh, it, they could develop this property per the, yeah, per the conceptual plan. Looking at, we'd have to look at the details, obviously. It's a conceptual plan. But we would look at the details once the subdivision pro, uh, through the subdivision process and the, uh, making sure that it's gonna meet all the requirements, uh, of this approval and the, the underlying zoning districts. But it, it could be done. Um, again, it comes down to the details, what's being presented, uh, on paper and the, for the real, uh, when they really submit for the subdivision.
And I just, I think it can be done if we issue a rezon, yes.
Uh, and, and Luke has strapping down to forty, where I think on this property, if you took it as a whole, it could fit seventy in a, in one of my normal scenarios. So we've made some considerations on this.
Yeah. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, we have two people that did, uh, a request to speak, so we'll start with them, and then we'll open up to, uh, other citizens after that. So Chuck Marin?
Thank you for giving me the time. Can't believe what I just listened to. Three years ago, this all started off, we went to a public meeting, Sam said the same things that he said tonight. Forty, seventy homes, whatever. Went to the planning commission, they voted it down. When it came time to come before you folks, he says, I don't think I wanna do that. So he pulled his request. So now, a couple of years later, he comes back again. Does the same thing. Nothing's changed. He's got, uh, this, the planning commission this time voted seven to nothing against the project. But here we are now, seeing if you agree with the planning commission or not. His, uh, concept shows forty homes jammed into that, and it shows Indian Hills Drive. I live across the street from that utility road. I don't wanna see people coming in and out of there, especially forty, forty people. We went both times that it went before the planning commission and went and, and made a petition against. We went to every house that was surrounding this property and, uh, turned it in. I think out of all the houses, there was only one or two that said, I don't care, or, you know, go ahead, but both times we had enough for a supermajority for your vote. And, uh, I turned that in a couple of weeks ago, the current one. Forty homes stuck in that fifty, fifty-home area. It's gonna basically double the, the impact to the fire department, police department. And if you're gonna put forty more homes somewhere, you probably want them to have some services, such as closeness to grocery stores, shopping, all those type of things. They're right in the middle of the desert. There, there's the subdivision is, they're, they're not gonna buy, be buying groceries from their neighbors. They gotta go drive somewhere. Sam's original plan showed one car garage for the forty homes. I don't know anybody here in Havasu that's got just one vehicle, even if it's just a couple. They, mom, mama and dad got a, got a car each. Where, where's that other car gonna go? On the surrounding streets? Gonna be illegally parked in wherever they can find a spot. Sam says, oh, no, we're gonna regulate it, but I don't buy what Sam says at all. So that's not gonna happen. Affordable housing? Give me a break. The subdivision, little subdivision he's putting on the corner of Oregrande and Buena Vista, less than a half acre, it's got nine units on it, six hundred square foot homes, one garage. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand? Now, is that affordable housing? I don't think so. I really recommend to the board, the city council, that they deny his request. It takes a lot of time to get signatures from all those people, and we've done it twice now. I sure don't wanna come back and have to do it again because something goes wrong here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, the next, uh, citizen that, uh, signed up to speak is William Newell?
Well, as Chuck was saying earlier, we were here in two thousand nineteen, went through the same thing. The zoning commission turned it down, uh, wanted to keep it at R-one. Uh, we came to the city council, and like Chuck said earlier, the gentleman pulled his request then. Now we're here back doing it again. Last month, the zoning commission turned it down again. So now we're back to step one. Looking at the map up there, I want all of you to realize those are all single-family homes around there. Mine sets right down on one of the little corners. Would you like forty homes right in the middle of, say you all lived here, have forty homes right in the middle of you? And he says there ain't gonna be any traffic? That's BS. One car garage. So what about these people have boats, motorcycles, uh, off-road vehicles? Two cars. Where they gonna park? Out on the street. The access road that he shows there, that is an access for the utility company to get in to service the telephone poles and lines back there. So there's gonna be one way in and out of there. It's gonna create problems, and it's gonna devalue my property value. That's one of my main concerns. Wanna build fourteen single-family homes in there? Fine, I can go along with that, but to put forty of them in there? No, I don't think that's right. And I don't think that any of you sitting here would want forty homes surrounding your backyard either. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Hey, guys, uh, I'm Nick again. Hey, um, this is like the second time we've seen this, where a developer comes in and he dangles us in front of you, and he's like, hey, you know, we need affordable housing in Havasu. Well, the thing is, these places, they make it worse. You know, let's say, all right, I'm a young guy, I'm gonna go buy a house, right? I see this shoebox for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, right? Well, now it makes that house that was five hundred thousand, it's an actual house with a yard and everything else, well, it looks cheap, right? Then the houses go and they inflate over and over again, because each time these shoebox houses get more and more money, it makes the other houses that are actual homes in Havasu get more and more and more valuable. You know, and then the thing is, he said, oh, you know, we're gonna have an HOA, you know, no boats, none of that kind of stuff. Tell me, what working-class, young family wants to move to Lake Havasu City and not have a boat? I mean, who, why? Why would you come here? What, and then what that does is, the kind of people who wanna live in these homes are retirees, because they don't have a boat. They're too old. They don't wanna go anywhere. And what happens then? They buy the houses. It inflates the values of every other house here. They don't work. They don't go on to the community. They don't help our worker crisis. So when we do these kind of things, it just makes it worse. Aside from the fact that, I mean, can you imagine being that poor house on that corner right there that's right next to the entry street? I mean, you're gonna be living next to a freeway. You know, it's a duplex there. I mean, realistically, a duplex is the way to solve the crisis. You offer people an actual-sized house. There can only be so many within a neighborhood. I mean, that'd be more or less likely what we do. I mean, when he's talking about, oh, I could put fourteen houses there, or they could be Airbnb'd, that's more like a threat. You know, that's like, oh, we'll put them there, but we're gonna Airbnb them. Well, that's not great, you know? So this whole thing, I mean, this is the same thing that happened with the houses behind Lowe's. They told you the same thing. And then, you know, you got the guy coming from the airport saying, hey, you know, these houses are gonna have a lot of noise. And you guys are like, oh, the airport's in place, it'll be fine, everything'll be fine. Tell me, how many complaints can the city really put up with when an entire neighborhood is complaining about airplanes? You know, and not only that, those homes were, how much were those again? Two hundred thousand for a trailer. And you don't have any equity in that. It's a modular home. It could blow away. It could fall down. It could get replaced. You know, you're not building equity, so the people that would be moving into them don't have anything to show for it. And like I said, you buy a trailer for two hundred thousand, oh, good. Here's this house down the street. It's an actual house built in nineteen seventy-six or whatever. And it's five hundred thousand. You're like, well, at least this is a real home, made of bricks. You know, it just makes the crisis worse. So. Main thing is, Campbell, I know you're going at, I mean, it's great. I really appreciate it, you know, trying to get the houses here, but that's what I'm saying is that every time these people come in, it just inflates the values even more for the homes that are already here. It creates a scarcity. You know, it's like, hey, the new homes are all these little tiny ones that don't have a yard, that have one car garage. But if you were managed to get one of the old ones, that's actual-sized house that has parking, and you're able to put a trailer there, well, it's gonna raise the cost and raise the values of those. You know, every lot in town that's not one of these is gonna go up even higher. That's my thing, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Hi, James Cannon. Um, regardless of any other concerns, I just don't know what the, government doesn't create anything. We all know that. Current administration's proven that. Uh, they just regulate, and if we wanted to affect the affordable housing, Airbnbs, I've seen a lot of my kids' friends leave, cause they pretty much got bought out because they were renting and they couldn't afford it. I, they've had private classes that had to close, cause all the other kids left. Um, and if we wanna go after affordable housing, it'd be Airbnbs. That's what government's job is, to regulate. That way you don't have to worry about creating, regulate the system that's already there to welcome families, so they could have a working class. So that's my stick.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just, uh, we are having a zoning issue, but, uh, that is, state law preempts us from, from regulating right now, but it is our number one priority bill in the legislature today.
Okay, um, quickly, ninety-seven single-family homes, um, and currently of those ninety-seven, five are under four hundred thousand. So just keep that in mind. Um, and then, um, so the, I understand everyone's side, everyone's side completely. Also, if there's any mortgage people in the house, um, I'm a realtor, but if there's any mortgage people in the house, they are now starting, the feds are stopping second homes, and the interest rates are gonna go higher for second homes, and so that will help a lot of the first-time homeowners. And so, Sam, I would probably, you know, check that out, and then you can have some data to, um, present next time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Scott Shidell. I live on Indian Hills Drive. I built my home thirty years ago. I'm now a permanent resident of Lake Havasu City. I don't think anyone here, I've heard the traffic issue, but even if single-family homes are built, there's gonna be a traffic issue. The big issue which Chuck brought up is gonna be parking people with multiple cars. Now, I will agree with Sam on one thing. He said you were elected to represent fifty-plus thousand people in this city, and it's probably part of your job to see that we get affordable housing in the city. Uh, staff did recommend this is appropriate for the area. I, I don't see that, and as Chuck mentioned, you typically on, on low-income or affordable housing, you have access to services, a lot of them within walking distances. So the, to me, and, and many of the people live there, I don't want, as I said in the planning commission, I don't wanna sound like a NIMBY. I mean, development is good. I mean, if I couldn't have built my house, where would I be? I, I don't want people to say, well, I got mine, now you can't have yours. I, I don't like that kind of attitude. But we do, we most likely need affordable housing, but this is not an appropriate location, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rex Cross. I live at thirty-seven twenty Indian Hills Drive. I'm kinda up in the upper peak, where the corner is up there. We built our home in ninety-six, and, uh, the property that's, we're talking about right now was Zone P at that time. It was public property. They were going to, they talked about doing a park. They talked about having a spot if they needed to do a water tower or something else there. Well, then the city decided they didn't need it. It's extra property, so they, they rezoned it as R-one. And then they put it up for sale, which is when Sam bought it for just low over two hundred thousand, about three, three, four years ago. So when he bought it, he knew it was R-one, and at the time, to, to explain a little bit more, that lot right now, without doing a subdivision plan, he could only put one house on it as an R-one. But by asking you to do a subdivision plan, whether it's his forty homes, or whether it's the R-one zoning with the fourteen homes, you'd still have to approve that plan and all the access to it and everything else. So my, my thing is, he's got the R-three at the bottom. There's other R-threes around. Later in the agenda, you're, you're addressing a forty-acre piece that could be more affordable housing, you know, different, lower-priced than these. And they, all the neighborhood is R-one. You know, dumping stuff on Indian Hills Drive, as you can see, it's an L. It's not even a through-street. So, uh, I recommend that you leave it as R-one. And if he wants to build fourteen homes on it, then he has the right to do that with, uh, subdivision and your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, again, uh, Bonnie Toy, just had, uh, one question for the Sam gentleman, which is, one, what is the Swanson River Walk? And then, um, I would just like to say that the city is going to grow whether people like it or not. It's gonna grow in a thousand different ways, and if any of these people haven't been in the back of Cherry Tree in a while, Cherry Tree is an amazing development, and you would never even know it's there unless you actually go up there to see it. I swim in the lake often. Never can I see any of those houses up at Cherry Tree from behind Cherry Tree. It's like a whole different magical land. So I imagine if that's developed correctly, there won't be as many problems as people think. Just look at Cherry Tree development.
All right, would anyone, yeah, please just make your way to the, the podium. Swanson River is, it's a development that's on Swanson at Pima Wash. Yeah, is that the name of it, Sam? Yeah, so that's the name of his development, is that, uh, uh, there was a picture of it on the line, but it's Swanson at Pima Wash.
My name's Kelly Lutz, and the zoning rules are for a purpose, and, uh, we can see why that purpose is, I think. The reason that someone's asking to change that zoning is to change that property possibly from fourteen homes that could generate eight million dollars for a builder, to forty homes that would generate at four hundred thousand dollars each, to sixteen million dollars for that developer. This is a dollar and cents thing. It's not gonna make affordable homes for the service industry people. Keep that in mind and keep the zoning the way you have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Can I answer?
All right, Sam, you, we'll give you an opportunity to close up, uh, your comments after we have, uh, concluded the public hearing, which it looks like, uh, no one else is interested in speaking on this item. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Sam, you can have some final comments and we'll bring it back to council for discussion and direction.
I just wanna answer the neighbors. So, the, the, what has changed in the housing is the availability. I mean, there is none. Three, four years ago when I started this, it was a different thing, that's why I pulled it off the agenda. Because you know what, I was, I was grasping at something. But now, actually makes sense, for my good luck. Traffic on Indian Hills. The problem, I've had meetings with you guys and you don't seem to listen to me. I just told you, Indian Hills is...
I'm sorry, but this, this is the time that they gave testimony to us at the council. You can rebut any of those comments to us, but please direct your comments at us and this isn't your time to have a neighborhood meeting.
Indian Hills will not have any traffic. If, if I get the R3, if I don't, then it's gonna have fourteen houses times four people in a house, whatever that number is, a lot. Inflation is, is this... The, the R3 is thirty-five homes spread out that we want forty houses. If I, if I don't ask for the zoning change, I could put thirty-five jammed in there. We're asking for forty to spread it out through the six and a quarter acres, which I think is a lot better idea. I think I, I think I hit them all. Values, we haven't had a problem with values far as bringing the neighborhoods down. And that's it. Oh, and Earl Grand name Buena Vista is, is two eighty-nine, it's not three eighty.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to council for, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, I just want to address a few issues that we've heard tonight. One, Sam's done some really good work here in town. Some of his projects have been really good. I, I have to disagree with, with some comments. It is our job as the government to regulate, that's why we have zoning laws, and that's why we, we make sure that things are zoned correctly. Sometimes we should change zoning, sometimes we shouldn't change zoning. We have to look at each project individually. So, Sam may have done fourteen great projects, but that doesn't mean that this is a great project as well. In my particular opinion, this project is in the wrong place. It's a great project, I love the conceptual design, but it doesn't fit into the R1 of that, that area. And it's our responsibility as a government entity to ensure that we're following proper zoning laws. And as I said earlier, we have a process. And the process was, it went before the zoning commission, and the zoning commission said, it's not a good idea. I trust their recommendations, that's why we have them as a commission to give us advice, because they're the experts in the field. So, I just wanted to address those, those issues that came up tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Vice Mayor Dolan?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move to deny ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve eighty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, we have a second from Councilmember Lane. I do have some additional comments. You know, I appreciate, Mr. Woods, what you're trying to do and bring housing development into our community. You have some great developments throughout our community, and I thank you for that. This particular project, the density is, is too great. I think, I think we're getting closer, and, but the density is too great for me on this part. And the integrity of our neighborhoods should not come at the, the cost of development of, of, of future areas. When it comes to this affordable housing, I think a lot of people throw it out, and I, I agree with Councilmember Campbell, it's a supply and demand issue. So, the more inventory types, variety that we offer, the better it is for everybody. But, you know, coming at me with an affordable housing, that means something to everyone differently, depending on what their income is and what their affordability is to, to be able to pay. But I think we're getting close to the density, but I, this is just too great for me.
So, what if, I'm pretty close on the thirty-five, Luke? If I was just to leave it alone? Right? Thirty-five, the fourteen, and the twenty? I'm within...
We have a motion.
A couple. What, what if, what if we knock it down to thirty right now and call it good?
Yeah, we don't do, we don't do that at this process, but, right, I like the way you think, so, yeah. Head back down and lower that density and we'll go from there. But we do have a motion and second on the table, do any additional council members have any comments before we go to vote? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point seven, the adopt ordinance number two-two dash one-two-eight-one, approving a planned development rezone for twenty-two fifty Marina View Avenue, tract twenty-three ninety-nine, block one, lot seventy-five, from mixed-use general to mixed-use neighborhood plan development, and applying the previously approved maximum allowable building height of up to sixty feet for residential townhome development. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you. Here's the area map of the subject property, it's in Havasu Riviera, which is off of Highway ninety-five to Marina View, excuse me, to Havasu Riviera Parkway. The site is rough graded and vacant. Here's the current zoning map, it's currently Zone Mixed Use General. The property to the south is, is Zone Mixed Use Neighborhood and developed with vacant lots and some homes under construction. The property across Marina View Avenue is also Zone Mixed Use General. And then there's, the property to the north is under the, control of the city and it's Zone P1. The Havasu, Lake Havasu City adopted Havasu Riviera specific plan for the two-hundred-and-fifty-acre parcel in two thousand and eight. The adopted land use plan designates one-hundred-and-forty-two acres of residential, eighty acres of mixed-use, and approximately twenty-eight acres of open space and trails. In the two thousand and eight approval, the applicant requested two zoning designations, mixed-use, a mixed-use district, and an R4, high-density res, multiple-family district. Now, the subject lot is in one of the mixed-use areas, and it was rezoned to mixed-use general, applying the previously allowed maximum building height of up to sixty feet. The mixed-use general district allows a number of commercial uses as well as multiple-family residential, but that residential needs to be above the ground floor of the, of the project. The commercial development allowed as part of mixed-use general zoning has not been realized on this property. Therefore, the property owner desires to rezone the property to mixed-use neighborhood plan development to allow a multiple-family attached townhome residential development. Here's a site plan of the proposal as presented by the applicant. The site plan shows seventeen residential units clustered into two- and three-unit buildings. The dwelling units will be two-story with attached garages and served by private driveways and sewer utility. Water will be city-provided. The bent building renderings provided by the applicant show, again, the two-story with attached garages, and these are two- and, and three-bid residential units in, in combined buildings. The applicant asking for this planned development to ensure the project will be developed as shown on the site plan and the sample building renderings. The planning commission heard this request at its January fifth meeting and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. That concludes staff's presentation, open any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions, Mr. Morris, before we hear from the applicant? All right, Mr. Gordon, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group representing the project tonight. It's been a long night already, so I'll try to keep it fairly short, but I did want to take a minute and step back. Luke did a good job of presenting what's before you tonight, but I just wanted to step back quick and kinda recap how we've gotten to where we're at at Riviera and give you just a brief update of where we are at. Because I know there's a lot of questions out there. So, this community all started back in two thousand and six through two thousand and eight. We went through a pretty extensive planning effort from the development side, working with the city and others, BLM and others, to kinda masterplan this community. At the time, a, a specific plan was granted by the city council in two thousand and eight for the community, which guided, provided the underlying entitlements for the community and guided the zoning and guided what would happen in the community going forward. That specific plan at the time, just a few notes to point out, was a mix, like Luke alluded to, throughout the entire community of mixed-use zoning and multifamily residential zoning. At the time, it was, it allowed for up to a thousand and forty-eight residential units. It allowed for the mixed-use components, commercial, residential, other sorts. And it also allowed for up to three hundred resort hotel-type units, allowed for, nothing that was required or, or granted. It was kind of set as a guide for what could be developed in the community. At the time, it's important to point out, too, when that was put in place, there were a lot of other moving pieces as part of this larger Havasu Riviera area. The two-hundred-and-eighty acres that the city was working on controlling through a recreation and public purpose lease had things on a map from golf course to Arizona State University to a convention center, and a much larger Marina and launch ramp facility that State Parks was trying to get moving. So, all of those things obviously guided kind of how the specific plan was put together and what the vision for the community was at the time. Fast forward, you know, ten, fifteen years later, the world changes, the economy changes, the city changes, a lot of things have changed. And so, we've been before you over the last couple of years rezoning and cleaning up and redoing portions of the Riviera community to bring it in line with where the residential market is today, where the general real estate market for Lake Havasu is today. And so, that's what's driven some of this to adopt and modify from what was in the original specific plan. City, same thing, a lot of things have changed in the planning process for the city. You don't see a golf course, you don't see Arizona State University, you don't see a convention center on the map anymore. You don't see it in, in the general plan, right, for the next five or however many years. So, obviously, as we continue to grow this community, we look at what the market's driving for this community, that affects what we're able to do and develop within the community. As we continue to move forward here, again, one more thing I wanted to talk about. In that timeframe when we came back, starting in about two thousand and sixteen, Lake Havasu City and Arizona State Parks were working hard to try and bring a launch ramp, a mainland Marina to Lake Havasu City. And I think there's been some misconception out there in the public as to how the Parkway was developed and what happened. I think it's just important to point out that, at that time, before the Riviera community was even really rolling forward, Lake Havasu City, Arizona State Parks, and ultimately developer worked together and came together and said, Arizona State Parks wanted to make some sort of launch ramp for mainland Marina work, right? And so, they made the decision to help try and facilitate that happening, but they didn't have access. Working with Lake Havasu City, Lake Havasu City said, we'll build a roadway, we'll help provide that access to get there. Developer stepped in and said, hey, you know, we'll participate in this, we'll share in those costs. We'll up, we'll upgrade the size of the road and the infrastructure because it obviously benefits the subdivision at the same time. An agreement was put in place, a development agreement was put in place, developer was on the hook for a, a portion of those costs. It had a twenty-year payback associated with that. That was in two thousand and sixteen. The road was constructed, I think, by around two thousand and eighteen. And by the summer of two thousand and twenty, the developer has fully paid, had fully paid back their obligation to that development agreement. So, I just bring those things up to kinda, one, recap, this, this community's been going for a long time. And a, a lot of different council members and a lot of different people have come and gone along the way. So, I think it's just important to kinda lay all that out there, I'll be happy to answer any questions. What that means today is, here we are at the end of the, getting towards the end of the planning and development of Riviera community. It's come a long way, we've developed three neighborhoods that are beautiful, that are building homes right now. There's two more that are almost finished. We were before you not too long ago, kinda setting the stage for the rest of the, the neighborhoods to the south, to the far south end of the property. And as the first neighborhood, Marina View, developed that we're looking at today, this parcel that was zoned mixed-use originally was redone because the zoning code had changed to mixed-use general, also paired with the other piece next door that is mixed-use general. That piece is in the planning and design phase for a two-story commercial office building and a bistro component and some neighborhood amenities that will be coming before, for permitting here soon. That other parcel will be moving forward in that, in that fashion. But along the way, again, a lot of things changed, and as we continued to look for ways to incorporate other uses in the community, the concept of a hotel or resort component in the community was something we had always envisioned and always thought was feasible. But, again, as a lot of those things dropped off the map and, and went away over time and the community evolved, and things are now moving forward, it, it just wasn't feasible, the market didn't ask for it. We've had a number of people look at that parcel for a hotel, one of which is now actually, probably was one of the best candidates to try and do something like that there, is now building, currently under construction on Park Avenue for a hotel. Why? Because it's on the highway, it's close to the water, all of the things that this particular parcel, while it's fairly close to the water, it's not on the water, it's not on the highway, it doesn't have visibility. So, again, just trying to set the stage for why we're in front of you asking for this zoning change. The community, the development, the real estate market has really said, hey, this isn't gonna work here. This townhome project is a good complementary use to the residential community that's being developed. It's a good use in conjunction with the Marina that's being developed, and we hope that you will support that this evening. Aside from that, just a little update, things are progressing really well, we're getting close, working with State Parks, getting close to opening the Parkway and opening the Marina, and that will come here later this spring before the summer. So, stay tuned for an actual date on that. But we're excited to wrap this up, close up the community, get the Marina wrapped up so that we can bring that to the public and we can bring, the public can start using the Parkway the way it's been intended to be used. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions. My partner Luke Still is here as well, can add to any of the economic statistics for the community. He may say something to it during the public hearing, but first of all, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, are there any questions of the applicant or Mr. Morris?
Hi, I have a question, but I think it maybe is more, maybe our city manager can answer that. So, there was a reason that they had this set away, set aside for commercial. What are the benefits of keeping it commercial to the city versus changing the zoning of it today? If that makes sense?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, sure, I could maybe start to kinda describe some timelines. Mr. Gordon did a fantastic job of, of kinda recapping the history of the project. I kinda maybe focus some of the conversations that I've had and the city team has had with Mr. Gold, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Still, Mr. Kolmak, and, and I think your, your attorney was in some of those conversations towards the end. We were trying to identify, and looking at the, the cost of services for the city and our existing taxpayers to be able to provide police, fire, roads, parks, other citywide amenities to that, that project. And then early on, the conversations were about what type of revenues would that, would a hotel? Because that was part of the early conversations, right? Not just solely, the zoning isn't just solely for a hotel, but it was, that was part of those conversations. We've come up with a, some numbers that, that were provided by Mr. Gordon, Mr. Still, and, and Mr. Kolmak, were about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that, that, and bed tax that would be generated by that, by that hotel. Those funds then could be utilized, provide the services that we talked about. Wouldn't go a whole long, a whole long ways in terms of trying to build a fire station or, you know, some of the triggers that might, might need to occur out there, but at least we could provide some of those essential public safety services. So, the difference, and we worked for about twelve-plus months and, and tried to develop some solutions and ideas and traded some ideas back and forth. In the end, the city never said, or at least myself and my, and the city team never said, we need you to do this. The, the, the offering at the table was, you're the developer, you're, you're the construction expert, you understand a design on the private side way better than, than we do. So, we're not gonna provide any, any type of specific details on what you should do with your project, but how can we find an offset to the lost revenues that would be tied to a zoning change? And so, those were some of the conversations that we had, we talked about phasing, a phase within the development for short-term rentals, we talked about other aspects of what that might look like. So, and, and then we got to the point where the short-term rental aspect wasn't gonna work with the, the, with, with those folks in the demographic that's, that's purchasing property and building houses out, out on that, on that space. So, I guess I'm trying to be answered that question and maybe some subsequent questions by talking about some of those communications from a city staff perspective, based on direction that I was getting from council members over the course of, of time, was to find a way to maybe offset some of that loss in, in revenues that would be utilized, provide city services that were part of the bed tax for that, for that hotel. A rezone effort would, would obviously would provide townhomes, they'd be generating of, of a residential property tax, but would not be to the same financial impact to the city and, and our existing taxpayers as the mixed-use general zone. Is that helpful?
And if I may, just on, on some of those components, when Mr. Gordon gave the background on when councils before us were making these decisions on, on some of the master planning, the Marina component wasn't as large. So, the revenue impact from the project as a whole is actually greater today than it was back when, again, councils prior to us were, were starting these initial parts of, of the area. So, certainly, the commercial activity that would be, would be lost by this is gonna be made up. would be, would be lost by this is going to be made up by the, the expansion or expansion of services that they are having down at the marina area. And then certainly, these citizens, as Mr. Knutson mentioned, are paying property taxes and paying city sales tax throughout our community as they use commerce in our community, like all of our citizens do. And that's obviously what pays for police and fire and parks and roads and the like. So, yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused about the marina aspect and how that's generating money back into the city. I'm, I'm just asking, I'm not familiar with that. Can you explain that a little bit or some?
Describe, I can, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, and in fact, I'm going to ask Luke to come up and just speak a little bit about the economics of it and the numbers because he'll do a much better job at that than me. But what I will say in, in comment to what Mr. Knutson said and to your question, you know, as we moved forward with this community, as we got to looking at the piece, the question was asked by staff, well, okay, we're replacing mixed-use general with multifamily, right? So what does that mean? And what are the, what are the impacts of that? And we were asked to look at that and study that, which we did. And at the end of the day, and Luke will speak to this, you know, we did a full economic study with a third party to really look at, okay, what, what is this community driving? And what, what would it have generated if that was a hotel in the original plan? What would that generate today with the changes that have happened, the increase in value in the homes? But more importantly, when you talk, Mr. Mayor said it right, the, the marina component that's now being developed, when this community was put together, when the zoning was put in place, again, so many things have changed from things that the city were talking about doing that would have drove potential higher and better uses, so to speak, from a tax standpoint that aren't feasible today. But the offset that we really look at, as we've continued to develop and the developer got involved in the public-private partnership side of the marina, you're going to see a marina facility here that if State Parks had developed, it may have been a three or four or five million dollar facility, that's going to now be a 20 to 25 million dollar investment, just the investment in that. And Luke can speak to the text, that the revenues and the generation that will offset that. So I guess my point of all of that is that so much has changed. We just kind of have to look at the overall impact of what this community and the marina, and it is all one. They are different things, but they are that, the city's partnership with the developer, with Arizona State Parks, with BLM, all of that together, the economic impact of this community is huge. And whether you put a hotel in there, or you put some higher-end townhomes in there, or you increase the size of the marina, I mean, you can trade some dollars back and forth, but the impact is large. And I'll let Luke add to that.
Mayor, can I ask him a question?
Yeah, let's have Luke give us some economic.
So I'm just going to answer specifically to the economic impact of the marina itself. So down at the marina, when we first envisioned it, it really didn't have a big restaurant down there, didn't have a big sea store. As we got through that application process, and as commerce kind of started to tell us where things needed to go, just like Michael indicated, we had a hard time putting a hotel on that site, but people do want to be down on the water. And so our sea store went from 1,000 square feet to 3,500 square feet. We went from a small potential bar to a 5,000-plus square foot restaurant, which we're working on right now, that could generate in the neighborhood of $5 to $7 million for, for gross sales. So that's a direct revenue back to the city that, that's going to be driven by pure economics. I mean, we have people that want to participate in that, and they, they're the ones telling me we can do $5 to $7 million. So I believe that it really can. It's an outstanding location. It's going to have not just the, the water traffic, but I, I think the locational command, people coming from town, Riviera really does kind of sit in the center of town. So that's the economic impact down at the marina. That's some of our, our commercial stuff that we thought originally would be well-suited for what we're talking about now on the 2.3 acres, really is better suited for the marina. So that's kind of where we've located it at. So there will be an economic benefit there. But even in, you know, just a real property tax situation, it doesn't go, not very much goes to the city, like 7% of the taxes that get collected from us go to the city. Some of it, a small tiny piece goes to a fire, I don't even know what they call it, but it's tiny. A lot of it goes to the schools. But overall, there's going to end up being around 530 to 570 homes in Riviera. And if you look at the first 12 permits that have been pulled, they're averaging over $2 million per permit just for the construction. Some of the spec homes that are being contemplated are in the $5 to $8 million range. If I go to the foothills and I pull a tax bill randomly, which I did, and it had a recent sale, so this has an impact, and there's a lot of different variables for that. But it, it was a $1.4 million sale. It was paying about $9,000 in taxes. 764 was going to the city. If I multiply that by 550 homes, we're talking about like $600,000 a year just in property taxes that go directly to the city. And I know only 10% of your budget is property tax, but it's hard to imagine something where there was never been a sale on Havasu for more than 3.1 million, and people are spending over $2 million per permit in the first 12. It, it's just kind of different. And it is elevating Havasu in a lot of indirect ways beyond the direct tax benefits that we're going to see. The folks that live in those neighborhoods, they are contributing a lot to our school system. That's really helpful for the hospital to recruit. It's, I don't think you're going to see a lot of kids. I mean, the, the fact is, this is going to be 75% second, third, fourth home type of situations. So while some resources are maybe going to be overused, we're also going to pay for resources in a different way in Riviera. And I mean, ultimately, this was never something that was, we're going to do something in exchange for this. The only thing we've done that with, to my knowledge, is the development agreement. We've made good on that development agreement. The zoning action at this point is something that's best for the surrounding neighborhood, and the commercial commerce overall for Riviera is still there. It's just not in the form of what we originally thought it might be back in 2008.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Still. Any additional questions from council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any comments, questions, or motion?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, please.
Do you have any questions? Make sure?
No.
Okay. I motion to adopt ordinance number 22-1281, approving a planned development rezone for 2250 Marina View Avenue, tract 2399, block 1, lot 75, from mixed-use general to mixed-use neighborhood slash planned development, and applying the previously approved maximum allowable buildable height of up to 60 feet for residential townhome development.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Lane. Any further discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. All right, item 8.8 is approve amendment number three to the Havasu Riviera Development Agreement with Raging River Management Corporation. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is amendment number three to the Havasu Riviera Development Agreement. So that's the big development agreement that we initially entered into in 2016, and it mainly had to do with a parkway. You heard Mr. Gordon mention that particular development agreement during his discussion. The second amendment to that development agreement had to do with the installation and maintenance of a gate and entry station. And you can kind of tell, it's, it's hard to see on this map up there, but the area that we're talking about is you're coming down the parkway, it's the very first entrance into the private development. So that's Copper Canyon. So we're talking about the area that's, 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 yeah, that he's circling with the mouse. So that is an area that is controlled by the city. We leased that property from BLM. With their permission and the city's permission, the developer was allowed to put a gate and an entryway on there. So this third amendment is just enhancing some of those features a little bit further. And so under this proposed amendment, the developer wants to install and maintain also a water feature and some additional improvements such as lighting, walls, fences, monument sign, and additional landscaping, which is further detailed in the exhibits one and two that were included in your packet. The next item is also an additional development agreement for this, for Havasu Riviera. The difference and why we kept them separated, this development agreement and the amendments to it have to do with outside of the development. What will be presented to you next has to do with all the infrastructure that's actually within the actual development. And so those are some of the differences. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Are there any questions of Ms. Gary? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing them, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Can someone expand on the water feature?
Certainly. Yeah, Ms. Gary or maybe the applicant?
Please, applicant, I don't.
Yeah, thank you. Michael Gordon with Desertland Group. So when the, back to the old vision of the community, I mean, Riviera itself means shoreline, means water. The marina, like Havasu, is all predicated on water. So when we put together the overall theme and feel and monumentation of the community, water is obviously the underlying theme in all of it. So what we have designed and are, are looking to include in this development agreement in detail, it is a small water feature element that's part of the signage and monumentation at the entry station, like Kelly, or I'm sorry, like Ms. Gary mentioned. It, it's a small feature. It has, it's, it's less water than a single-family home swimming pool. So I understand the concern over a water feature, but the impact is, is minimal. It is visible to the parkway, to the public. It will be, help beautify the area and kind of set the stage for the look and feel of not just the residential community, but as the marina component as well, and the public lands that'll be developed for the public's use.
I like it. I guess just my concerns are that, you know, we're struggling with water conservation, and then we're going to put a water feature in, in an area. It sounds good. I mean, it looks good. The optics of it just are a little hard to swallow.
Yeah, I understand. And it was always kind of envisioned and planned. And as we've gotten into the details of it and worked with the city to get permits and such for it, that's, that's why it's part of this. I understand the optics. Again, we kind of look at it on the optics. On the other side, it's such a small water element. It's just a small sheeting water element that's part of, it just kind of speaks to the, the peace and tranquility and what water means to, to everyone in this community. And again, the impact from a water standpoint is really such a minor drop in the bucket. It's, it's smaller and less impactful than a, like I said, than one single swimming pool in someone's backyard here. So I understand the optics, but that's, that's where we're coming from with it.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Just confirming, just for the, the public, as we did, or at least I did, receive a public comment. They just wanted to make sure they were using recycled water. So it's not like there's new water constantly pumping through there. Your recycling settles down, it pumps back up.
Oh, correct. Yeah, just like, just like a water feature in your swimming pool at home. It's recirculating. Absolutely. Yes.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Did I already do that? I might have already done that. But, yeah, I'd be very thorough. So I guess I'll close the public hearing maybe for a second time. And any additional discussion or motion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I'll motion. I move to approve amendment, amendment number three to Havasu Riviera Development Agreement with Raging River Management Corporation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Any additional discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, item 8.9 is approve a development agreement with Raging River Management Corporation regarding requirements and conditions for public infrastructure and other improvements within the Havasu Riviera development. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you. As Ms. Gary set the stage here, the previous item was for a development agreement on the city-owned and controlled, see, the city-controlled property. This development agreement is for within the privately-held property within Havasu Riviera. Because Havasu Riviera is development was, will be served by private streets rather than public rights-of-way, the developer must enter into a development agreement to address responsibilities associated with the installation and maintenance of public facilities within the development. The development agreement includes the developer's responsibilities to install public infrastructure to city standards, which upon city inspection, approval, and acceptance will be dedicated to the city, excluding the lift stations, which will be privately owned and maintained by the developer association. In addition, it outlines future repairs and dedication of utility easements within the private streets, and sections are also concerning landscaping and gated entries. With that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions, the council of Mr. Morris? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Any questions, comments, or possible motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Lane?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the development agreement with Raging River Management Corporation regarding requirements and conditions for public infrastructure and other improvements within the Havasu Riviera development.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Coke. Any additional discussion? All right, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is 8.11, adopt ordinance number 22-1283, approving zone change for 6590, 6600, 6700, Chenoweth Drive, and 1800 and 2000 Victoria Farms Road for 39.54 acres of property from light industrial plan development, industrial and agricultural preservation to manufactured home district. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you once again. Here's the area map. The subject property consists of three full lots and portions of two others with a total of just under 40 acres. They're located on the east side of Highway 95 with access from both Chenoweth Drive and Victoria Farms Road. There is a signal intersection, signalized intersection at Highway 95 and Chenoweth also. The subject properties are vacant and undeveloped. It's located within the city sewer service area and Epcor's utility water service area. The abiding property in the northwest is developed as storage units, and just north of that, there is Havasu RV Resort. The rest of the property is vacant. The subject property is a mix of zoning districts right now, including light industrial plan development, agricultural preservation, and industrial zonings. The applicant provided a proposed site map for the development overall. They also went through, recently went through a general plan amendment to reclassify the property to high-density residential, and that general plan amendment was approved by the city council on December 14th. This request then is the next step. It's to establish the zoning district for the property. The applicant's letter of intent proposes a residential community aimed at addressing the current housing challenges that Lake Havasu residents are facing. The community is planned to be 350-plus housing units and accompanying amenities. The, here's the village's site map. It shows four different villages distributed across the property. Village one is, is shown as RV spaces. Village two includes some tiny homes, and then villages three and four are shown as manufactured homes locations. There's also a management office and gated entry shown off of Victoria Farms Road to the west side of the property. It also includes various amenities scattered around the facility, and they're shown on the plan here. The residential and accessory uses that are proposed here are allowed in the manufactured home zoning district, which is the requested zoning. So that fits the zoning district, and that zoning district is allowed under the general plan designation that was approved. The Planning Commission heard this request at its January 19th meeting and recommended approval by a vote of five to one. The one dissenting vote on the Planning Commission, that commissioner was concerned that the units would not be set aside for full-time residents and voted against the request. With that concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any initial questions of Mr. Morris before we bring the applicant up?
I have a quick question. Is there a reason a section of Village Four is not included in the outline there? Or is that?
Yeah, that's the, the property that's shown here is their conceptual plan. That portion of the lower part of Village Four is not within the plan area that was re, the general plan amendment went through, and it's not part of this request. So it's just, this is their conceptual plan, so that part of it apparently won't be moving forward because it's not within the general plan designation area or this rezone area.
Okay, thank you, Luke.
Good evening, city council members. A late night tonight. I'm sorry that you're going through that. I'm going to make mine pretty quick. We've been through this before. I think all of you are fairly familiar with what we're wanting to do and what this project is. There are a few items that I wanted to address that I know are concerns that have been expressed. There are a few items that I wanted to address that I know are concerns that have been expressed by the public in general, not specific to this project, but also concerns that have been addressed by you specifically to this project and as well as concerns that have been addressed to us in the planning and zoning meeting that we recently went through. So one item that I want to talk about is Mr. Dolan mentioned that he'd like to see more rentals in Lake Havasu, that that is, in his opinion, a way that we can address the housing issue that we have as far as our workforce is concerned. Obviously, we agree with that, that the, a component of rental houses definitely helps provide more inventory to the rental market, which will provide more houses for people that work here. We anticipate that there will absolutely be a portion of this project that will be rental units, likely owned in a combination between the ownership of the property as well as investors that own homes in there and make them rentals. The other side that comes along with that is when we're allowing to rent property out, is it going to be rented for short-term rentals? We have an answer to that, that, that is the best answer that I can give you within the scope of what we're asking for tonight. As the manager of projects like this, it's very difficult to manage short-term rentals. The goal of this is to not build a hotel where you have people checking in and out every night and having that kind of thing, since it's going to be a gated community and it's going to be designed for a very specific residential use, not a commercial use. It, it doesn't make sense economically. It's not feasible to make it be short-term rentals. That's one point. The other point unfortunately contradicts the issue of rental houses. However, it is a factor that I think is important for you guys to be aware of. The most ideal type of financing for this type of project is what's called agency financing. So that would be the financing that comes through Fannie Mae or Freddie. I can go on all the details of that, but the specific part of that that applies to this project that has a very strong impact on the lack of ability to make it have a lot of vacation rentals, also rentals, which is the bad part of this, is that financing requires that there's no more than thirty-five percent of all the units that are not owner occupied. To word that another way, that means that most of the units that are in here are people that live there and, and it's their home. They're not renting it. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're not second homes, just to clarify that point. But I feel like that financing is an important part of the overall picture. That's part of the objective of this project and something that I wanted to share with you to help to address that. Also, the other part of it, when it comes to Airbnbs, that's just not the model. Another one that I wanted to bring up that's been brought to our attention multiple times, largely from the development that's to the north of our site, Havasu RV Resort. There's a lot of concern about how much traffic this is going to bring to the area. And frankly, they're right. We're talking about taking an area that's going to be industrial, that's, that used to be industrial. Now we went through the general plan amendment to make it high-density residential. However, with high-density residential, there's going to be a lot more traffic here than there would have been in previous zoning or general plan designations for this area. It's our interest to be a really good neighbor. And so there will have to be a traffic study. That's going to be part of the permitting process. The objective of ours is to make sure that the impact of traffic on any neighbor is mitigated as much as possible. Just wanted to point out that that's a, that's a part of our process to even have this, the development approved. But it's also our interest just, just as being a good neighbor, I guess. The last point that just plays into all of the thing that's a really, really important thing to understand. We brought this up the last time and I just wanted to bring it up again in closing. Basically, the western half of what you're seeing here is already an approved plan development for two hundred and twenty-two units. So what we're talking about tonight doesn't change the potential course of that. And what we're asking for is actually a, I guess you would argue, lower use and lower density use of the space than what's already approved there. And I feel like that's a really important point for you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions and I know that you guys want to move on as much as possible. So I don't want to belabor any of these points.
Yeah, if you, could you just clarify what you said about short-term rentals? I think I might have missed what, it's not feasible to do short-term rentals or what, what point were you trying to make there?
Yeah, the point is that when you have a community that you're managing and, and you're responsible for all the tenants and everybody's happiness and all of that kind of stuff in there, one of the really important points of that is knowing who is or isn't supposed to be in there. So if you have a different person that's going to be coming in and a different vehicle that's going to be coming in on a regular basis, I mean, that just creates a management problem. The other issue is a big chunk of it being vacation rentals is, messes up the financing.
And then what type of timeframe? So if the rezone was approved this evening, when would you think that this would bring inventory on the, on line for folks to be able to purchase?
So we've been anticipating that this is going to be approved. We feel that we've put together a nice project and we've been working with engineers and putting together a plan for this. I, I wish that I would have been able to get you a more updated conceptual that we have, but I don't have a good one to share with you quite yet. The short answer to that is we believe that we'll be able to have units ready to go in twelve to eighteen months.
And then when you were here in December at our public hearing, you talked about maybe phasing this in. Can you refresh my memory on what that discussion was?
Yeah, absolutely. The current plan is to do phase one development, which is essentially the western half of the development and then doing the second half of the development in a, in a later phase.
And that, that would include the RV spaces and manufactured housing and townie houses all concurrently? Or would, would those three villages be done in phases as well?
No, we would, the, the plan that we've contemplated most recently has a mix of about, well, I'm going to give you the actual numbers. So twenty-five RV spaces, approximately sixty manufactured home spaces and then approximately ninety tiny home spaces. And that's for phase one.
And the tiny homes are the manufactured homes as well?
They are. When I'm saying tiny home, the technical word is park model. It's a four hundred square foot manufactured home essentially.
All right, questions of council, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes. One thing that I've heard from a lot of the citizens is, well, I don't like that you have to lease the land. I even asked you that particular question one evening about the concerns that the constituents had on that. And what, your answer was brilliant, which is the reason why we do that is we have more control of the facility and who's there. And then you get into the price point and I know a lot of people are really unhappy with the term leased, but I'm very unhappy with the term property taxes. I just think property taxes are a terrible thing because when you buy a piece of property, you never actually own it unless you pay your property taxes. The government can come and take it at any time. So I do like to reference to a lot of people that even though you're getting an HOA, you're getting amenities, you're getting a clubhouse, you're getting a pool, you're getting roads, you're getting infrastructure. That's what you're paying for, along with you could call it property taxes or lease, but basically that's where you led me, you, our discussion allowed me to feel a lot more comfortable with what you guys are doing here because I believe you know how to do these and I look forward to voting yes on it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes. I, I like this concept. I think it's a good concept for this area. I'm glad we're not talking and calling it affordable housing because it's not. But I do like the different options here and I guess if you're willing to buy into that, you know what you're getting into, whether that's the lease and that's their choice. It does give us more housing options. I guess the concern that I have maybe would be for, for our fire chief. We have fire station six, right? Out there? That's six, am I correct? That's the location? So what does this look like for like the public safety, like that type, type of situation there? I know we're doing the study, so I'm just curious of what this looks like.
Mayor, council members, any development that we currently have in Havasu, as your fire chief, I'm going to make sure that we have adequate coverage and adequate firing EMS response. So the thing is, this would be covered by station six, which we have adequate staffing right now. And when I continue with a study, anytime a new development does come up in Havasu, I'm going to make sure that, obviously that's a risk and that, that puts demand to our services. And I'm just going to make sure that the city as a whole has adequate coverage for fire and EMS protection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Before we open the public hearing, so just a few things. So you're on Epcor Water, so water is not going to be supplied by Lake Havasu City, but wastewater would. So if future discussions, I guess, when you go through the development process, you know, there may be a cost to bring that to your property. You're prepared to, to absorb that cost or take care of what those needs are to bring that infrastructure?
Okay.
And then certainly it's an industrial zone. So anytime you do that, it's really a slippery slope. As my comments were earlier, you know, more inventory, more supply, more options and variety, I think is fantastic for, for folks, but it's an industrial zone. So loud noise, off-road vehicles and certainly airport traffic. You mentioned and we had a very long discussion at our hearing on December fourteenth about because you're managing it and you'll, you'll have onsite management, that you'll be able to identify those issues and make sure that the homeowners or people purchasing your products would be aware of that and understand that that is a reality that they live with in that neighborhood. I just, if you could speak to that tonight to renew the conversation we had in December.
Absolutely. So because this is a centrally managed project, similar to an apartment complex, there's a layer of insulation between our tenants and the city or the next wherever they would address their complaints and also the responsibility of letting them know of these kind of concerns. And so the way that we can help mitigate these challenges is be very clear when we have new tenants that are moving in, that we're near an airport, we have neighbors that crush cars and rock and stuff like that and it may be noisy and dusty at times.
Right. Go ahead and open the, do you, Councilmember Lane, do you have a question?
Thank you. Well, I just want to make a comment because I made a comment on this last time. And I just want to clarify that the business model, I think, is a great business model. It's in the opportunity zone. Understand the whole reason for you all to keep the land, but sell the, the homes. It's, it's a great business model and it's done all over the country. My only concern, and you've allayed some of that tonight, is the fact that it'll turn into short-term rentals or people that buy the property and then it sits empty for nine months out of the year and they live there for two months, which doesn't help our housing and it takes up some of the land in our opportunity zone. So I just, I like what you're having to say. I, I, I just, I'd like you to go a little bit farther and, and say you want it owner occupied. It, it kind of sounds like that's what you're saying without really saying it.
So to answer that question, yes, we want it owner occupied. That being said, we're not taking any money from you guys. And so it seems onerous for it to be put on us to make sure that we finance the project and make sure that only certain people live in there, not to mention that you can't do that because of fair housing. So what we can do is we can put a product on the market that's at a extremely competitive price at the, the far low end of what Lake Havasu has to offer. And if the local residents that need housing see that number and see that product fit for them, then they need to buy it. Because as we well know, that if they don't, there's a lot of people in California that probably will. That's the best I can offer for that.
And, and I'm not saying that I want you to violate any laws, but there, there is a way to do CCNRs. You see some of these models where it's only fifty-five and older. You see some that they, they don't allow rentals at all. And I'm not saying I don't think you should have rentals. I just don't want you to have short-term rentals or it to be vacation homes where we have a product in an opportunity zone where people come from out of state and now we're still left with the same issues that we had before you got here and we no longer have the property in the opportunity zone. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, you're right about that. Our model is for sure not to have short-term rentals, not to have people that rent their units out short-term for a long host of reasons. The biggest one being it is a nightmare for management to do that. I think if you looked around Lake Havasu, you probably won't find a lot of apartment complexes that allow their units to be rented on a short-term basis. The same concept applies to this.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? We actually did have one person, Kelly Lutz, signed up to speak. So we'll start with Kelly and then we'll move on to anyone else that would like to address the council on this matter.
I had a lot of things to say, but obviously I don't know enough about it to, to say half the things that I wanted to say. Nancy Campbell mentioned something about property taxes. What's the situation with property taxes?
Mr. Gates, if you could just get on the microphone for those viewing at home. Thank you.
I know, problem, the property tax thing. We pay the property taxes as the owner of the real estate. So our tenants do not pay the tax on that. However, I do want to add a asterisk to that. The owner of the manufactured home will be required to pay a personal property tax on what they own.
Basically, I just wanted to say that I don't think that we really need any more little homes. And then I echo the, the question that city council members say about short-term rentals. Basically, that's all that I wanted to say. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yeah, yeah, please. Yeah, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's getting late and council members. I just had, wanted to make a few comments. I'm with, I'm Steve Mint. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at Havasu RV Resorts, right adjacent to this. And we've been engaged with this project from the first hearings. So a lot of meetings, in fact, Mr. Gates had was, had a meeting at our resort yesterday. We had a hundred and fifty-plus people in attendance to understand what is proposed to go next to them. So the meeting went well and there were a lot of questions, but really we support the project. Okay, we're not opposed to the project. We really think it's, it's probably, for us, it's a better alternative than light industrial. But there are concerns. He's expressed them and that is the traffic mitigation. I hope during the planning process that that is looked at very closely. Right now they're proposing one entrance off of Victoria Farms Road. So it's a quick turn off Chenoweth, I mean, it's a quick turn off Chenoweth onto Victoria Farms Road and then a quick right into, into the development. If that's their entrance, I would really propose that they have an exit that exits out onto Chenoweth. So it's a right turn and they don't have to be in the way of the trucks. So anyway, that's, that's some amateur traffic study suggestions. But that is a major concern. The flood plain has been an issue or a concern and they have done a lot of work on this and I thank them for it. It looks like it's going to be a very positive impact to our, our resort and our development. The, the last one was on the sewer lift station there. It's very odorous at times and now we're going to add another four hundred homes or units into that. So I hope during the planning process, whatever needs to be done, that that's taken care of. And really, that's all I had to say and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
I have just a question for us. Do you guys get a lot of complaints about the airplanes flying over your head? The sound?
The airplanes?
Yeah.
Yes and no. I think I was told that our, that our resort has the most number of complaints in the city.
Well, you're the closest to it.
But it actually, it's, it's a glorious sound with some of these hovering over the top of us and seeing the military planes come in and that. There are some people that complain about it, but I, you know, we wave at them and every once in a while they tilt their wings to us, so.
And they bought knowing that there is an airport right there and a gravel pit.
Now, the approach zone for the airport should be under non-developed area. There's a, the, the approach lane should be to the east of us rather than coming in right over the top of us. There's, it's open ground there. I believe FAA, FAA, I've been told, I'm not a pilot or that, but the, the approach from aircraft can be, it should be under non-occupied space if it's available and this direct in is unoccupied space. And this direct in is unoccupied space, so, but thank you, Nancy.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional questions, comments, or a motion. Councilmember Moses?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve ordinance number 22-1283, zone change for 6590, 6600, 6700, Chennawith Drive, and 1800 and 2000 Victor, Victoria Farms Road for 39.54 acres of property from light industrial plan development, industrial and agricultural preservation to manufactured home district.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Moses, a second from councilmember Campbell. Any additional comments? Seeing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Item 8.12, ratify change order number one to construction contract for the McCulloch Boulevard Payment Rehab Project with Combs Construction Company, Inc. Mr. Hart?
I want to first of all, thank Mr. Morris for warming this seat up for me. And these seats are a little more comfortable than the ones in back, so I'm glad I'm up here. Honorable Mayor and the city council, thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight. We're going to start with streets, which is an exciting thing to talk about. And most importantly, we're going to talk about the McCulloch Boulevard pavement rehabilitation project and the change order ratification request that's before you right now. Just as a refresher on this project, the project consisted of two-and-a-half-inch rotor milling of McCulloch Boulevard from its intersection with Smoke Tree Avenue to Akoma Boulevard full width and placement of three inches compacted concrete pavement full width as well. It also included full depth removal at the Pima Crossing on either side and there at Mulberry. The construction budget when we first went out was 1.2 million, and the project, when we went out to bid and bids came in, the low bid, responsible bidder was Combs Construction at $728,760, which was considerably less than what we had originally thought the project could come in at. The project, as I said, we went from Smoke Tree Avenue up to Akoma Boulevard there with along that McCulloch Boulevard corridor. This change order, this ratification request deals with two roads that we added as we were out there and wanted to take advantage of the contractor being in there and the great prices that we had. That, one that I highlighted here is actually Mulberry from McCulloch Boulevard to Swanson, and then the second one was Scott's Drive from McCulloch to Swanson. And we added these streets as part of this change order. Couple of things I want to touch on. One is the rotor milling that we talked about doing, that rotor milling we thought originally would be two nights and ended being one night even with the two added roads. So we were very pleased with Combs Construction's and their attention to detail there and their willingness to tackle and get it done. The paving, as you know, we talked about potentially going at it at night, and we had some temperature challenges that forced us to go during the day so that obviously we have a better product. And we had thought we might need to close Boulevard, the McCulloch Boulevard corridor as a whole, but we were able to break those sections up and go from, my brain's kind of fried here, but go from Akoma to Querrio, from Querrio to Mulberry, and then Mulberry to Akoma. So we were able to break it up in three days. One of the things that I felt speeded the process up was the contractor utilized material transfer machine to lay asphalt. You'll note that all the trucks that they used, if you saw them out there, they were belly dumps, they were able to just come up, place it, and this machine was pretty slick to pick it up and put it in the spreader, and I think that helped tremendously in it. I think finally, the product that we have, as you see right now, is one that we can all be proud of. It was really a great project with us, the city, working with the contractor. We came in afterwards and we did the striping as a city, tackling each section immediately the next day, and I think that was a really nice touch and kudos to our street crews for moving forward in that way. So this change order incorporates the two additional streets, Mulberry Avenue and Scott's Drive that were added. Both, as I said, had the PCI, which is Pavement Conditioning Index Ratings that warranted and could justify it. And then it also incorporates some additional work. When we were on Mulberry Avenue, just did the first lift there, one strip, and the pneumatic roller went out there to begin to work the overlay, a pipe busted. Ended up being actually a fire line that broke underneath, got jiggled loose, and so we had to stop everything. Our crews came in, kudos to the water division, and they were there until about 2:30 that night to get that fixed and to allow the contractor to get back in there and go back through and fix that area. So we were very pleased with that, but that's part of our cost here. So that ends my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Questions, Mr. Hart, members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
I, first off, I want to say the job was phenomenal. I loved it, everything about it, it's beautiful, they did a great job. It was a quick job, we were in and out, absolutely no complaints there. But earlier today, we had some comments about process and putting process in place, and we left the church to leave because processes are processes. And I personally wish that we would have had the scope of work with those two streets in it to go out to bid prior to this because it just makes sense. Swanson was newly paved, you have McCulloch that's newly paved. It would have been nice to have considered that scope of work at the time when it went out to bid. It didn't. I understand things happen in the field, and I understand the bid came in lower, but a process in place is a process in place, and I don't understand why I'm looking at a 17% increase on a job that I'm approving today that's already done. So do you have, can you explain that?
Yeah, when we went out to bid originally, you know.
Gives me 17%. Did I say 17,000? 17% increase on a job?
I think you said 17%. Yeah. So when we went out originally to bid and we had the scope that we had put in place and according to our numbers, it was going to be close to 1.2. So that's why we did not add those two sections. And once we got the bid and they came in as nice as they did, then it only made sense to go ahead and to add them to the project. Now, the ratified change order process, maybe the city manager can help me here because my understanding is, once we get to a dollar amount above, you know, when we're out there making these decisions on the fly and we're doing what we call, you know, we've gone through, we've crunched our numbers, we've looked at all the data and the conditions, it just makes sense and we can justify it, we move forward that verbal change order, and then we come back and there's a process for ratifying if it's above 50,000, I believe we have to come to city council and get your blessings on the actual change order. City manager?
And I totally agree with you, but I remember back when it happened that when I even mentioned with city manager that the price came in so low, too bad we didn't add the extra streets, and they basically said, no, we're going to add the extra streets, we're going to do more work. And so I thought, might as well. I was hoping that ratification would have came to us sooner, we could have approved it, and then the process would have been correct. If we're all about process and process is everything, including planning and zoning process, then I'm just asking, moving forward, that we look at these scopes from a higher, streets moving forward, if we have two streets that are newly paved, we should consider the scope of where to connect, especially on these small runs, because as you saw, the process is very easy. Everybody thinks these roads and asphalt millings are difficult, they are not. You can see how easy the process was. So I'm just, as your council, as council, I'm just asking you that I don't want to see, like the water rate study came after the bill was paid, and I just feel like, why am I even here voting on this? You guys made the decision without us, that's fine, I know things happen, but as we move forward, I'd like to expand on scope of work if we could. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Knutson, do you have any comments or thoughts to that, to councilmember Campbell's point? You know, possibly when we saw that the bid was so much less than the engineer's estimate of where we're at, looking at those at that time and coming to council with, you know, option A and B, which happens a lot. I mean, it happens with chip seal, happens with hog seal, happens with all sorts of different options. So, I mean, that's what I would like to see, that way we're a part of it. So, Mr. Knutson, if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, honorable mayor, members of council, in terms of ratification, it's never, I never take that situation lightly when that determination is made in terms of the authorization. That staff is not in control of the expenditure of funds above 50,000, period, end of story. So when there is a need for ratification, it's not handled lazadaisically. So that's a way to put that. In terms of process and how that worked out, just want to make sure we understand that a process in terms of a legal process was followed, right? So there's nothing that occurred and anywhere on that way. But I think that as staff, we need to do a better job in terms of eliminating ratifications when we can. Now, there will be water main breaks, there will be emergency situations that are going to occur throughout the city, where we need to get crews out there right now and not wait two weeks for a council meeting to occur. So those things will occur, right? And so that, but I never feel good about seeing the word ratification on a council agenda.
I just want to state, there's a perception value on it as well that's kind of concerning because from other contractors, let's just say my name, was on that contract. I would feel uncomfortable that I'm giving a change order to the city of a 17% increase and knowing good and well that the job was pushed back and you guys had the bid in your hand for an additional month at least. So that's all I'm saying, moving forward, perception-wise. I am so glad my name's not on this contract, and I know that everything was legal and upright, but as a council member, I'm just asking to look at the streets with a higher scope of work. I'd almost rather go in and get a bigger bid, you know, bigger space and get the bid and then let us take a look at it. We can always go smaller, can't we? We can go, I would rather see them go smaller and saying, we can't afford it, but we'll just do this road instead versus we're just going to slide two more roads in because we can. And when you're doing a bid process and you have a scope of work, each contractor has a liability and responsibility to do it within the scope of work and timeline and stuff. So I'm just asking, as a councilperson, if we could look closer at that and try and do a bigger job, better job with it. Thank you much.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Sure. Councilmember Lane?
Okay. I move to ratify the city manager's execution of change order number one to construction contract for the McCulloch Boulevard Pavement Rehab Project with Combs Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $77,984.56.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Lane, a second from councilmember Moses. Any further discussion? Hearing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Item 8.13, approve amendment number one to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Equalization Basin Replacement Project with Corillo Engineers. Mr. Hart?
Thank you again, honorable mayor and honors to the council. I'm losing my throat for some reason, so I apologize. What we have here tonight is we're going to talk about wastewater and we're going to talk about our current project, that is our Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Equalization Basin Replacement Project, and in particular, our contract with Corillo Engineers. Is this going to work? So just as a refresher, the Island Wastewater Treatment FEB Replacement Project is out on the island, obviously. The Flow Equalization Basin is a structure that's been in place for quite a while. I got to point it out here, the area that it's in at the Island Treatment Plant. It was originally construction in 1983 and modified in 1999 for control, and then it was shut down due to various issues in 2011, and that's when the city brought in Corolla Engineers in 2019 to design the replacement of the FEB. They came up with plans and specs, and we went out on a construction project, advertising it, and it was a project that was awarded to Technology Construction on July 13, 2021 for $4,109,001. Just as a reminder, the actual engineer's estimate was closer to 5.3 million. So when this came in, there were several other bids that were closer to this, so it was kind of a market thing to where obviously the city was able to secure this contractor with additional funds left over. The purpose of the project was to replace existing earth and flow equalization basin with a new concrete equalization basin, and a construction management contract was awarded to Corolla to kind of supplement staff on April 13, 2021 for $234,777. As we got into this project and got into the ADQ process with getting the approval of to construction, to construct, we ran into some extensive, unanticipated additional work that Corolla had to do for us and perform to get us an updated Aquifer Protection Permit. So that process there, essentially, ADQ said, oops, we weren't aware you didn't have one functioning, you know, what happened here? And we kind of went back and forth on whether that communication happened in 2011 or not, but there was a lot of, obviously, changes in staff and such, but we had to work with ADQ. Corolla did an excellent job of just going to the gun with it in a sense, and they were able to pull together what was one of the required things, which is a clean closure or a strategy plan, which is 120-page document, and ultimately, the final APP modification report prior to construction being permitted. And then in this process, you know, with staffing changes and such, new people coming in and they recognized that our PLC location, which is a programmable logic controller, which was in what we call the headswork, which if you've ever been out there and somebody offers you opportunity to take a tour of it, tell them no, because it's really, really smells bad and it's a challenging environment. So we realized that it would be a better fit to move that programmable logic controller to south of the facility into this existing building, which caused some modifications to the design plans, and I think it was like 14 sheets had to change. And then there were some changes with some of the capacity in terms of depth of the basin, so there's some redesign that had to be done by Corolla, and that work adds up for the permit, additional work they didn't plan, design, in the amount of $57,692. That's why I'm here today to recommend an approval of the amendment to their contract for all the work that they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
I would like to mention, too, that we, I will be coming back at some point here in maybe a month or two to request additional dollars for the contract itself because of the redesign, the contractor's waiting for it, he's going to, you know, okay, you know, they're going to want to, there's going to be some cost in the redesign for them in terms of what they do. I just want to be upfront on that, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Hart? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve amendment number one to the Professional Services Agreement for the Island WWTP Flow Equalization Basin Replacement Project with Corillo Engineers Incorporated in the additional amount of $57,692.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 8.14 is a presentation on the pre-construction contract for a construction manager at risk services to FCI Constructors, Inc., for the new municipal courthouse project. Mr. Sloan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. There it goes, it's up on the screen. Tonight, we're here to talk about the pre-construction contract for the construction manager at risk, which is called C Mar, for the new municipal courthouse. So just briefly, there's three main types of project delivery methods that we use, design bid build, design build, and construction manager at risk. Design bid build, you've seen a lot of these, you've participated in the award of the contract, but these consist of two separate contracts, one contract with the design consultant and architect or engineering firm to do the design, and then competitively bidding the project and awarding a second contract to the lowest, the contractor with the lowest bid. Design build consists of basically one contract with a contractor architect team. And then. they do both the design and the construction of the project. The selection of the contractor architect team for this type of project is based on a combination of both qualifications and price. What we're here to talk about tonight is the construction manager at risk. This method consists of three contracts, one with an architect, engineering firm to do the design, uh, a second contract with a contractor to perform pre-construction services during the actual design process, and then a third contract with the same contractor to perform, perform the construction of the project for a guaranteed maximum price, which is what we call the GMP. Some of the benefits of the C Mar delivery method is the contractors involved early in the design process and can provide, can provide constructability review of the design and provide value engineering options to potentially reduce cost. Uh, there's also a potential for faster delivery of the project with multiple or early GMPs for long lead time items. Um, and then there's the guaranteed cost of the construction itself. So those are kind of the differences with, between those types of delivery methods. Construction manager at risk is, as I mentioned, set into two different phases. Pre-construction, during design, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, and then construction for a guaranteed maximum price. The pre-construction, during design consists of cost estimating, scheduling of the project, value engineering, the whole entire subcontractor selection process, early GMPs, if there are any for long lead time items, and then producing the final GMP for construction. So we did the formal request for statements of qualification process, uh, that we typically do here at the city. Six firms responded to our proposal, our submitted proposals on our RFQ. Four firms were interviewed by the selection committee and the highest ranking proposer was FCI Constructors. The pre-construction contract that was negotiated was for 44,010 dollars. Just kind of give you a timeline of what that looked like. The last programming update we did with DF DG here in front of council was in August. Um, and since then, we've gone out and written the C Mar request for statements of qualifications, um, did the formal bidding process or, or review process of that. It needs to be out for one month. And then November, the selection committee, which consisted of five members, reviewed the proposal, scored them and ranked them, um, and then conducted interviews with the four highest ranking firms. Um, and then after that, negotiate the pre-construction contract, prepare this presentation and get it on the agenda, and here we are in February. So that's kind of what happened over that C Mar procurement process over the last six months. Uh, before we get into the updated schedule, just a quick review on the programming phases that were selected during the programming, um, phase that we did and, and the presentation from that. Uh, this is showing the option one that was selected as the lowest cost option, but also included new HVAC, um, and a fully built out second courtroom, which was very important. And then we had the part on the second floor, which was this shelled out council room and jury assembly space, um, with AV space and of course, the all important elevator. So by using a C Mar, we do have a few reductions in our contract, our design contract with DF DG. So the cost estimating function is now put onto the C Mar contractor to provide a, a base model cost and the GMPs, the cost of the project. So that gets reduced out of our current, uh, contract with DF DG. And of course, the bidding phase support from DF DG would not be there as we're hiring the contractor now. So it does equal about 28,000 dollars in savings. And so looking at this schedule going forward, um, we'd be back in doing design with the C Mar pre-construction, um, starting now this month, um, through July. And as we mentioned, we can have, um, early GMPs and early procurement items, which would be before the design was even completed. If we have long lead time items, which we're finding, um, steel, HVAC and elevators are definitely long lead time items. So we could definitely see those before the design was complete. Um, and then the construction phase would start in August and go through June of, of next year. And then we get into furnishing the, the courthouse IT and then, and then opening the building. And with that, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. And thank you for bringing, uh, this, uh, to us. I believe this method is going to be much more effective for us going forward and more cost effective. So the, the cost savings to the, uh, current contract with, uh, the architecture firm, I mean, those are direct savings, but the savings that we're going to have by doing C Mar is going to be tremendous based on, on having the actual builder in the, at the table saying, oh no, if you do this, it might save that. Or if you do this and put that, we can utilize these things. So, um, you know, great use of resources. Thank you for bringing it to us. I would just point out that, uh, this item is under 50,000 dollars. Uh, doesn't, um, have to go to council, but we want to make sure we're, you know, this is a very important project. I believe just our last council meeting, we did a resolution of support for problem solving courts that, you know, can only happen with space. So we just want to make sure every opportunity that, uh, that we have, we're, um, having the public conversation. Unfortunately, it got too late to have a lot of public here, but, uh, uh, but to those that are watching it and then obviously when we have the next update, um, we can have more engagement. Are there any questions of council before we open the public hearing? All right, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We did have, uh, one citizen sign up, Diana Benton.
Hello, I'll make this, um, quick because it's pretty late. I attended the August meeting, um, in which all the options went through. It was so poorly put together that they had to punt and obviously you're pursuing this contractor. I was actually quite shocked to see it still on the agenda tonight and that not a lot of progress is made in the months since August, other than hiring, um, an additional firm. But my concern was that, um, when I, when they, when I went through all the briefings and all the data, their data says, um, so my question is, how many rooms does 10,000 case filings and 2,000 customers per month translate to a facilities plan? So what I didn't see is any capacity or usage analysis. So we're spending a lot of money here and you got one shot at this. So do you need two big courtrooms? Do you need a big courtroom? Do you need two smaller courtrooms for like family court, depositions? Is it, excuse me, is it really what we need and how do we know that? Because that, there really, really wasn't any discussion in the August meeting of what the today requirements are and what the growth. Now, maybe I'm not a part of that, but that was not clear at the August meeting. The other concern is the layouts that they have, um, result with people flow. And usually typically, not that I've been in a lot of courthouses, but typically there's areas for private areas where the judges, the jury, they're not exposed to the public area. When you look at these layouts, everybody's walking in the same area. So is that really what we want? I, I'm, I'm not an expert on courthouses. It's just that a lot of jurors are not going to want to walk out in the public area and look at family members if it's a criminal case, you know? So it's just food for thought. And of course, the parking was, um, is a concern, you know? And, um, understanding the Sallyport requirements, like how many criminal trials do we usually use a Sallyport? I mean, I don't know. But, um, that's all part of this planning. So before they can even start, their first step is we have to be confident that we know what our requirements are today and what we think our growth requirements are. And maybe you know that, but that was not obvious in the August. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, no, thank you for your comments. Uh, so, so far what we've done from that perspective is Judge Colley, who's the magistrate, um, has worked with, uh, engaged his court team and then worked with, uh, the city team to do space planning. So a lot of that stuff that you saw on the, on the slide that, uh, Mr. Sloan provided earlier is just kind of bubble graphs of like where it's going to go, uh, but it would take in, um, you know, separate spaces for staff, um, to, to protect them, uh, jurors, juror rooms, those types of things. And then, uh, this is a municipal court, so all of our offenders, um, are low level offenders, uh, but great, great feedback and those conversations have. I know, Mr. Knutson, you've been involved in a lot of those conversations, uh, with the city team. I don't know if you have anything to elaborate, um, on, on those comments, uh, from, uh, the citizen.
Yeah, honorable mayor, members of council, uh, members of the public. Um, the first thing we did in terms of the, the kickoff process is I sat down in a room with the architects, with the, with the judge, with his team and his staff, um, uh, facilities maintenance and the other valuable members of the city team that, that's responsible for, uh, the court operations, IT as well, is including those conversations. Uh, first questions is what's your, what's your caseload? What, uh, what kind of access do you need? What type of specialty courts or problem solving courts are, are we, do we have now? And, and what are we, uh, what are we planning for, for the future? Uh, took a look at analysis of other, um, similar sized cities in Arizona and looked at the size of, of their, uh, uh, their, uh, their court operations, how many cases they have based on, and then how many, what's their population? Uh, and then did some analysis in terms of what the size they look at and trying to project not only what we need today, but projecting out to what we're going to need as, as a municipal court, uh, for the next several years. So we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves. I had conversations about what, uh, maybe expansion might look like in 20, 30 years down the road. Uh, and so then there was conversations at one point with that even involved council, uh, do we put a second floor in? Uh, do we need the square footage for a second floor? What's that look like? And, uh, all that, all those conversations are based on, uh, operational needs, what the court, uh, what the court, uh, uses today, what the plans are for the future, what our growth projections are, learning from other cities within, within Arizona. Um, and then all those conversations, like you alluded to, mayor, about, uh, uh, what do we want to do in terms of the, the function? Do we want to expand our veterans treatment court to other areas and look at mental health issues and, and other substance issues? And the judge's got some, has some phenomenal plans, uh, moving forward in terms of reducing the recidivism rate and, and, uh, incorporating some of those programs. So all those conversations take place and then we try to package that up as best as we can and then bring it to council. Uh, and then kind of the snapshot that I guess the public sees is here's, based on all that, here's the space programming that, that, that's out there. But rest assured, um, they animal, hundreds of hours, uh, that I put into, uh, uh, this in terms of preparation before it comes to, uh, comes to a council meeting.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Troy? Yes.
No worries. I'm still not that tall. Just a quick question about the, what I saw, it said it was a pre-construction contract for, um, problem solving court? And I was wondering if there's a difference between a problem solving court and a municipal court?
Great question. Yeah, so this is a, a pre-construction contract, uh, to bring the construction folks to the table. Uh, the, uh, difference is that this is for a municipal court, which is, uh, what the city is required to provide within the umbrella of the municipal court. Uh, we would have problem solving courts, which we already have two of them, uh, that exist today, which is the veterans treatment court and the youth court. Uh, and Judge Colley has plans, uh, for additional courts, uh, in the future.
Did I read the screen wrong?
I don't have that screen in front of me. Uh, maybe Mr. Sloan.
I just thought it said problem solving court.
Yeah. I, I use those words, but I, I don't, I didn't see a screen that said that, but.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, no worries. Yeah, anyone else, uh, want to address the city council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to, uh, council for any additional discussion, uh, or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
Um, when we were at session, I was incredibly thrilled when Judge Colley got up there because when I was campaigning, they were talking about how they needed a new courthouse because their filing system, kind of like what you were saying, that we had miles and miles and miles of files. And I remember saying, why are we even looking at to build a new courthouse? We need to streamline our filing systems and make them nice and clean and figure out what we need to take and your spaces that you were talking about, how much space that we're going to need? How is it going to look with the new filing systems? What is the IT stuff, stuff going to look like? We can't look at that unless you clean, like clean house per se. I don't ever move from one house to another without liquidating everything I don't need. And Judge Colley got up at this last session and he said, we're making it through our miles and miles and miles. We're getting down and down and down and we're going to be ready to move only what we need to and know what we need. So I was, I hope that makes you feel a little bit better that they are working diligently to put it all in line and I like the process of organizing your stuff. Just don't move it all and then worry about what, where we're going to put it later. So your questions are spot on and I love that you stayed here all night and are concerned and, and care and we love your input for sure. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, possible motion? Oh yeah, we don't need a motion. That's even better. Yeah. 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 Well, we don't need a motion, so we're just going to move on then. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sloan?
Moved it in a.
All right, let's, let's do that. Well, thank you, Mr. Sloan. Yeah. All right, uh, that concludes our public hearings. We'll now move on to item nine, which is our current events. Are there any council committee reports? All right, uh, future meetings are Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM will be a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 at 6:00 PM, we also will have a regular meeting. Number 11, future discussion items? All right, item 12, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. And a second, thank you for being here.